I'm going to call a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by Legislative Affairs Manager Donna Graham and Alderman Sullivan will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cleed. Alderman Maria.
Present.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clements.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Kovaya.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Lowshire.
Here.
You have 13 in attendance.
Thank you. As is customary, I will turn the meeting over to the Chairman of the Budget Review Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Okay, this evening, we're going to be doing five bond public hearings, followed by the budget meeting. I would ask that you try to keep your comments to five minutes or less, and we'll go through them one at a time. I will open the public hearing on each bond and then close it when we're done with comments. And when we're done with all five, then we'll go into the budget meeting. So the first, the first public hearing is R 22064, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $867,367 to purchase a 2023 Pierce Arrow XT pumper truck with associated equipment. Is there someone here that would like to explain the requirement and the need? You can either do it at the mic or you can come sit in the empty chair. Please give your name and position.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert Barrows, Deputy Chief Fire, Nashville Fire. We're before you tonight to looking to get your approval on a FY '23 fiscal, I mean, capital improvement, I mean, gee, I'm sorry, Capital Equipment Replacement Fund schedule, which the Board of Fire Commission supports, and we are here requesting your approval on the purchase and prepayment of a 2023 Pierce Arrow pumper. This is in conjunction with the SURF account and our normal procedure, which is to replace a pumper truck every 12 years.
Could you pull your mic a little closer?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. To replace it, pumper trucks every 20, every 12 years. So this is on the schedule for this year, and that's why we're here.
Okay. Does anybody have any clarifying questions? Pull the fire to the mic. Seeing none? Thank you. All right, I'll now open it up. For testimony in favor, please state your name and address for the record.
Matthew Guthrie, 104 Fawn Lane. Good evening. I'm here again advocating for the R 22064 to purchase the 2023 Pierce Arrow XT pumper truck with associated equipment. On first reading, I spoke before you all about how important your role is in our city to ensure that our first responders are equipped to do their job. I hope as we move forward, we can help Chief Buxton and his team get the resources needed to fulfill the legacy of his predecessor, Chief Brian Rhodes, to make Nashua Fire Rescue the first ISO-1 rated fire department in the state of New Hampshire. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Testimony in favor?
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I just have a question about this. It's on the SURF account, which was one question I had, so it was budgeted in SURF. It's a 12-year schedule to replace the pumper truck, so we're doing it on the 12 years. I'm just wondering if the life of the equipment has truly expired, the truck at 12 years? Is there any opportunity to get 13 or 14 years? And I'm only asking that because it's a tough time right now. We all heard the economic news that came out today, and, you know, everything being what it is, everything, equipment doesn't necessarily just completely fall apart on 12 years, but of course, you would have to look at what investment you're putting into that equipment for repair. So I guess I'd just like to understand if there's a possibility to keep it going? Has it been through a lot of maintenance such that it's not worth it, given what we've done? Or could we extract a little more life out of it because of what's happening here? Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Testimony in favor?
Well, is somebody going to actually answer that?
Would you like to come up?
Thank you.
Robert Barrows, Nashville Fire. So the vehicle it's replacing is a 2011, that, which is housed at the Lake Street Firehouse. That vehicle will then become one of our reserve engines. So the engine that is actually going away, the pumper that's actually going away, is a 2001 pumper. So it has way lived, outlived its normal lifespan, so.
As I understand it, they get very expensive to keep up, even though they're the reserve ones.
Yeah, exactly. So well, it's, one will go away, the 2001's going to go away, we'll have two spares and a training engine still in reserve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other testimony in favor? Seeing none? Testimony in opposition? Seeing none? Once again, testimony in favor? Seeing none? Once again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none? I will close the public hearing on Resolution R 22064 at 7:07 PM. I will now open the public hearing on Resolution R 22065. R 22065 authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $7,505,000 for various improvements and equipment at the Solid Waste Department, Four Hills Landfill. Oh, you're quick. So name, aim, and position?
Jeff LaFleur, Superintendent of Solid Waste. The three items on this bond proposal all relate to airspace at the landfill, conserving as much airspace for the City of Nashville's residents. The first part is the GPS system for the landfill compactors and dozers. This, this piece of equipment, or multiple pieces of equipment, will be able to help us shape the landfill to proper closure area. We can do proper grading, we can get it to the right height, so we know that we're not overfilling an area, making, making it more work for our employees and for the City of Nashville to, to grade out the final grades. The landfill gas expansion phase three, as, as most of you know, three or four years ago, we were going to do a $10 million bond to do the phase three. That's, that would have included this. We got a little held up with DES approvals and everything, so we decided to drop this half of the, the phase three off, continue, so I'd have enough airspace to continue working and taking in trash for the City of Nashville. This is the second phase of that. It's a, it's a, going to gain us some more airspace in the phase three. It was a design so I could remove the use of the soil wall in part of phase three. The, the third part of it is part of the soil wall. It's $1.8 million requesting, that should be able to complete the soil wall that's needed. Again, the soil wall is a 500-foot setback from the residents of Nashville to our, to our trash. It's something that was when designed for phase one and two, the, the superintendents before me designed it, designed the phase one and two to be able to accept trash with a waiver from the state. They never got the waiver. So now we have to build this wall to separate the 500-foot setback. This will help us continue going up with the wall, keeping us in, in with the permit process with the, with the DES.
Okay. Any of the Aldermen have any clarifying questions? Aldemans, O'Brien?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. LaFleur, I'm going to give you the opportunity to explain why we're so concerned about the airspace, and it's my interpretation why we are concerned, is where everything comes to a finite clause, and the dump has a, a date itself that'll come to a terminus. And even though we're spending over more than $7 million, we're increasing the life expectancy of the landfill. And can you read your crystal ball? What will happen once the landfill is closed and the possible ride? So it justifies us in spending this money now to increase the longevity, as much as we possibly can, of a resource for the city such as the landfill.
Absolutely. Great question. Right now, our landfill has, with everything that's permitted, right now, as of right now, we have about 11 years' worth of airspace. Once that airspace is gone, providing, I don't want to lose, lose sight of phase four. We have phase four in with DES right now. We, we expect to have proposal, you know, it all approved and everything, which would gain us 40-plus more years. But let's just say that I have 11 years left of airspace. Once that airspace is eaten up, now we have to turn our facility into a complete transfer station. We're taking in trash, we're shipping it out. Now, no matter where, where it goes, it has to go somewhere. Right now, we're looking at Ohio, Pennsylvania. You're looking at trucking costs, you're looking at fuel costs, you're looking at building a facility that can handle the trucks that have to come in, or some kind of rail or something. Those are great expenses. Right now, we own a great 300-acre landfill that, that we should take pride in, and we do. We, we, I've been throwing out customers trying to sneak in from out of town because the landfills in Massachusetts are filling up. Everyone's trying to sneak stuff into our landfill. We're throwing them out, we're trying to save us the airspace, so we don't have to turn into a, a permanent transfer station. We're trying to get us beyond as far as we can go, and right now, again, if I get my phase four permit, we're looking at 40-plus years more of airspace. I hope that answers everything.
It does. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you very much. I was looking at the SURF fund, and I noticed that there's listed here a LGP dozer listed at $475,064. Excuse me. Why, why didn't you, when did you know that you needed these dozers listed here in this bond, and why weren't they put in the SURF during budget prep?
Great question, but I am not buying any equipment on this. There's no dozer equipment. This is GPS systems that'll hook to the equipment, so I can shape the landfill properly. I will be coming eventually for a bond for the, for the dozer. That's much needed in the landfill, but that's in later times. We still have SURF meetings to go through and everything like that within our department.
Alderman Sullivan?
I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I must have missed it. How many GPS systems are you looking for?
Right now, I'm looking at at least two. If I get approvals for the third dozer, or for the second dozer, I anticipate putting one in there. And I'm also going to be buying a handheld unit that I can go around and do our own surveying around the landfill, so I don't have to hire, you know, third company people to come in and survey every six months or three months. I'll be able to go out and do it personally, hitting points on our landfill.
Okay. Thanks.
All set? Any other clarifying questions? Yes, Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. Certainly interesting to hear that with the current proposal, we'd have 11 years left. That's it. I actually just had a question. You said 40 years with phase four, what you're hoping you'll get. Is it then 51 years, or is that 40 years all told?
I want, I want to use 40 years as a, as a conservative number, only because we have apartment buildings being built, we have condos, we have multiple units coming in. So that's going to depend on the amount of trash that's coming in from within our city. I use about 80,000 tons a year right now, and that's gradually going up because of the new developments in the City of Nashville. 40 years is definitely a, a very conservative number.
All set?
I would welcome the opportunity to talk about how we can extend the life of the landfill at some point. Thank you.
All set?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, more about timing. Why now for the GPS systems? It seems like this could have been useful probably years ago, and, well, just really curious about the timing of it. Why now?
Absolutely. Great question. As I spoke about the phase three landfill, this will be the actual first part of the landfill since I've been there for the 25 years, that we can actually get to a closure side. Phase three is the furthest part away from the land, from the offices at the landfill. We'll be working our way out. As we're working our way out, I can get to final grade, I can get ready to start capping. We have a closure fund within the city that we have to put money into every year, and as we're working our way back, I can start capping that, which helps us with our emissions problems in the, in, you know, with DES. We can start capping it, making it a little more beautiful for the residents down in the, the backside of our landfill. During the winter, they can see right up through. I want to make it, you know, so we can continuously gradual, gradually go out and close our landfill. These pieces of equipment will help us. And also to that point, back five, 10, 15 years ago, the, the systems weren't great enough. Now there's satellites everywhere, so now we can get better systems, we can get pinpoint, I can get down to a half, half a grade, you know, so half a percent of a grade, which would really help us out.
All set? Any other questions? I would strongly suggest anybody on the board that hasn't had a tour of the landfill do so. I hadn't had a tour for quite a while. Jeff took me on a tour last week, and it's amazing. The work that goes on every day, the amount of equipment required to do what we have to do, and planning for the next phase, which is between the other two phases, they need to know exactly where that work's going to happen, so that they can get the maximum extent possible out of the landfill, because once that landfill closes, the, the fees are going to be huge. All right. Thank you, Jeff.
I'll sit here.
All right. Okay. So R 22065, testimony in favor? Seeing none? Testimony opposition?
I just have a quick question. So, because I was listening, this was not in the SURF fund account, was it? Or was it, because it's GPS equipment and the type of equipment it was, it wasn't put in SURF? So it's going to be a bond for this year. What amount, when, when would something like this be bonded? When can you use it?
Jeff?
Jeff LaFleur, Superintendent of Solid Waste. I would anticipate buying it immediately, as soon as, as soon as I got the money available. I'd be buying it and putting it on our equipment immediately.
Okay, so you would want to sell or get this equipment? When would the bond be sold, and what would the impact on the budget be this year, bonding this right now? I'm just curious. What's the payment?
Well, I could make an educated guess, but I'm not going to. I'm going to ask Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I have a more comprehensive set of responses to the question that was just asked. Didn't know really when to do that. You have handouts on your desk, but suffice it to say, once you folks give the authorization, that's an authorization to spend, that's like an appropriation, so Superintendent LaFleur can put the PO in once it becomes law. But I mean, I'll go into a bigger discussion when it's my time. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. And by the way, for the record, Alderman Lopez joined us via Zoom at 7:06 PM. Any other testimony in opposition? Seeing none? Testimony in favor? Again? And once again, testimony in opposition?
Just wondering, the handouts that you have, are there any extra copies for the pub?
Any other testimony in opposition? Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing at 7:20. Thanks, Jeff. I'll now open the public hearing on R 22066, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $16 million for building renovations at the Birch Hill and Main Dustable Elementary Schools. Name and position for the city?
I'm Sean Smith. I'm the Plant Operations Director for the Nashville School District. So the renovation for Birch Hill and Main Dustable has been in the capital improvement plan for a number of years. We did not originally plan to do it so soon, but we have this thing called federal grants and ESER funding for us. The Board of Ed voted to do a portion of those funds for the, for this renovation this past spring. So that, those funds expire in September of 2024, so by bonding $16 million and marrying it with those, we're leveraging that against the federal funds that are available. So for roughly 50% of the cost to the taxpayer of Nashville, we're able to renovate two schools. So we, we think that's an awfully good deal. A little bit about the two schools. They were built in 1972, last renovated in 1993, so that's 30 years since the last renovation. That's typically how far schools can go. A lot of the main systems in these schools are at the end of their service life. When I talk about building systems, I talk about boilers, ventilation, roofing systems, things like that. Some of the building codes that were in place back when the school was last renovated or even constructed are now, many of them are obsolete. R-value, everybody knows what that is in their homes, you have insulation, there's a certain R-value to that. So the roof that we have on, on the school has a relatively low R-value. The windows we have are very low R-values, so we're going to replace things like that. The ESER funding goes back to the pandemic, of course. That will pay for anything related to the HVAC systems. It will also cover anything that can be possibly related to that. So, for example, to install HVAC systems, we have to install ductwork. So to do the ductwork, we have to take down the ceilings. Take down the ceilings, we have to take down electrical outlet, the lights and everything else, so it can pay for quite a bit. So our intention would be to first use up as much as possible of that ESER funding allocation before we even touch the school bonds. But the, the total cost we're estimating will probably be in the neighborhood of $31 million. We just got the schematic drawings from construction manager, or just from the architect. Construction manager's looking at them, they have to do the estimates. So we'll know matter, more about the actual cost in the coming month, but it won't go above $16 million, I can guarantee you, plus the money we have for ESER funding. I guess that's a good place to stop. Again, the reason why we're doing it now is to leverage federal funds with city funds.
Just a couple extra points. The Open Concept went out decades ago, when these schools were built, the, what is now the South High School, it used to be Open Concept. That was, of course, that's long gone. It's not Open Concept anymore. And the, the key thing is, is the new HVAC system will be designed to eliminate, because we're going to incorporate the new technology, up to 99.9% of all pathogens, which means that, there's two issues with the Open Concept. One is security, in that it's, it's virtually a powder keg if somebody gets in there and tries to do something, because it's all open there, no doors to lock, there's no classroom walls, it's just, and then as far as the air concern, the air quality will vastly improve for the students and the teachers, not only for pandemics, but for flu season and, and even cold season, you know, in the way the schools are now, somebody sneezes, the whole school could be infected. So it's, it's improving the lives and health of the students that go to that school now and in the future. So, are there any other questions? Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, so we have on record, these two schools, they're the ones that need it more than any of the other schools currently, right, to redo them?
Correct. Those are the next two. I would say, to, to follow on with the ventilation, they're probably the two schools we get the most complaints from on air quality. During the pandemic, I was providing those air, air purifiers to the various parts of the city. Those are the two schools that got most of them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had mentioned in your comments that these two schools have been on the capital improvement schedule for a number of years. Can you quantify what number of years means?
No. Sorry. I, because we have a capital improvement committee meeting next week, I went into my, my file, and I was looking at last year's submission, so I saw it was definitely in there. I would say I've been carrying it as a future renovation for four or five years anyway. It's certainly been on my radar, I'm not sure exactly when I stuck into the CIP plan.
Right. Okay. Follow-up, please. Alderman Sullivan?
And I don't know, you can answer this, maybe somebody in the room can, but it, am I under the impression that in order to tap into 16 million of ESER funds, we have to bond this money? We have to bond the 16 million to get another 16 million? Or are you looking at it as each project costs 16 million? So now, you're able to do both schools at the same time?
So ESER funding is created, and maybe Mr. Dunham can speak a little bit more, since he's dealt with the finances of it, but ESER funding, to my understanding, is for pandemic-related things. So when we say HVAC systems, you know, improving the air quality in the schools, that's definitely an ESER funding sort of thing. Now, to renovate a school so that it has a modern HVAC system, we have to do things like build walls.
Doors.
And, and doors, and everything related to that. Modern education is not what it was in the, in the 1970s. I feel strange saying that, since 70s, I was still in high school, but, so we have much more smaller learning environments, so for, because of special education and everything, it's just smaller spaces. So we have to renovate the entire school, chop it up into smaller pieces, put up walls, so the building of the walls and things like that have to be paid for by bond. ESER funds will not pay for that. So they kind of, it's like a hand on a glove, they both kind of need to be done at the same time.
Okay.
If that makes sense to you?
Yes. Alderman Sullivan?
Last question. For you, probably.
All right.
Do these projects get kicked over to the joint special? Like, will we have presentations on them, like we have the middle schools and the Penn and Chuck?
You might have missed that meeting. They have already been sent over to the joint special.
Okay. Perfect.
And yes, we will be having presentations, and, and it'll add significantly to the amount of meetings that Mr. Smith and I have to go to weekly.
Fantastic. Great. That's it.
Yes, Alderman Kelly?
Just a point of clarification. If we have additional questions that are not clarifying, you'd like us to wait into the budget meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you. Just one more, Mr. Chairman. So, to the point that Alderman Sullivan said, that has been on that plan for a while, capital improvements project. I'm assuming things bump it every year, and that's why now we have an opportunity here to take these ESER funds and bond, and actually do something that probably keeps getting bumped? Is that, is that accurate?
I would get on my soapbox relative to the capital improvements. Very few things get funded every year. There's a significant amount of things that are on that list, and they have to wait their turn, and they rank them. Anybody who wants to volunteer to go to their meetings can see that. But we've had other projects that had higher priority in the school department that, and, but now, these two schools with half the cost being covered under federal funds. but now, these two schools with half the cost being covered under federal funds, which, which, and the reasons for the expediency is because these funds expire, and we've got to get going, that's why we're already in process, technically. But if we don't pass the $16 million, the other part doesn't happen. Thank you. Any other questions?
Question.
Oh.
Just for clarification, while I was on the school board five years ago, the Open Concept and renovation of the school had came up at that particular time, so it's been at least five years. And because of the color bond, safety piece, the school is open, and if you go on a tour there, you can see all the walls there, you can hear classes from one end to the other, and it's not safe. We need to renovate those schools.
Thank you. All right, any other clarifying questions? Seeing none, okay. You might want to sit there for a minute. I'm going to now open up for testimony in favor. Name and address?
Matthew Guthrie, 104 and Fall Lane. To answer Alderman Sullivan's question, I was at the last Board of Education meeting, and they kind of leaned towards, it was greater than five years, but less than 10 years since this project has been sitting there. I'm here to speak in favor of R-22066, it's $16 million bond. While the work is sorely needed at these schools, I do have concerns at the breathless pace that these being pushed through over the past few weeks. If you're unfamiliar with the project, it's estimated over $30 million, and we have to use $15 million in federal ESER funds for the HVAC portion of the work. The Board of Education just moved this through as new business a few days ago. Now, in that meeting, it was pointed out that this is only an estimate, because it only got put out for RFP last week. You know, so I, I don't know about you, but maybe the sponsor of this legislation knows more about what the costs are, are going to end up being than the, than the estimate, but, you know, I know if I went to build a deck on my house, or if I went to renovate my basement, I would have an estimate in hand before I went to the bank and borrowed money. But apparently, this doesn't happen with taxpayer money. You guys are basing this decision on an estimate of how much the cost is going to be without, outside of the RFP process. So what if the project runs over $16 million? Or, as you know how reliable federal funding is, what if the ESER funds don't come in on time? You know, I, I guess we'll just borrow more money to do this. I guess that's why we have a AAA bond rating, not because we've been diligently doing our fiduciary duty to the taxpayers, but we've been borrowing money for the sake of borrowing money. We need to come up with a better plan when it comes to renovations and new builds for public buildings in the city. Thank you.
Is this testimony in favor or in opposition?
It's in favor.
All right. The, the ESER funds are already in hand, so that's not an issue. And we do significant planning to try and figure out the cost, in that we, we have somebody that does an initial estimate, that's very familiar with the school, we have, they have walkthroughs as far as the architects and possible construction managers, and we've been looking at these schools for a number of years, and the estimates are safe and include contingencies and escalation fees, so it's, unless there's some catastrophic thing that we find, it's not going to exceed the bonded money.
My concern is that if you're still in the RFP process, everything you're basing your decision on is a guesstimate.
The, the project will be scoped, if, if the estimate, if they do the pricing and it comes in over $16 million, we'll use engineering analysis to reduce the size of the project.
Okay.
Alderman, yeah. Mr. Smith?
I don't think it paid me enough to be... It was under my breath. The, to answer the gentleman, yeah, the, the schools were actually studied by an architect, engineer, and worked with a construction manager back in 2013, so there was an assessment done of these schools, Birch Hill and Sunset Heights. The, the city proceeded with work at Birch, at Broad Street and Sunset Heights, which we finished in 2015 and 2016. So these two schools came out of that same study. I had these construction manager update their estimate about a year ago, and that kind of formed the initial basis for the budget for this. When we talk about RFPs, the RFPs are not a recent thing, they actually came out this past summer. We've already hired an architect, and we hired a construction manager. So the architect's been working on this for, I'd say, a couple of months anyway, construction manager, as I indicated earlier, just received the schematic drawings this past week. So within the next, I'd say, three weeks, they will look at those and update their estimate. And as Alderman Dowd said, if, if anything's over the budget, then there's something called value engineering that we go through, and we chop away until we make it fix the budget.
Anyone else? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question may be directed to you or to Mr. Griffin. I know you're involved with the schools, and I'm involved with the...
A point, point of order, I thought this was public, public comment at this point.
Well, this is a clarifying question.
Yeah, we had, in, in all, with all due respect to Alderman O'Brien, we had that portion, we're having the budget meeting soon.
If it's responding to the question that was asked by the person in the audience, then if it's part of that answer, it could be allowed, but...
May I continue, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, perhaps this might be a fine time to explain, you're working on a project, I'm working on the Public Works Building Project. What happens to these bonds if we come in and do our diligence and come in underfunded on the project? What happens with the remaining bonds? Maybe that might, and, you know, be entertained by the public to understand what happens with that money.
If we only go out and sell the bonds when we've undertaken expenditures, the city has enough funds to pay the bills, and then we do the bonding to replace the cash. So if there's money left over at the end of the project, it's up to the Board of Alderman, we just don't bond, we don't sell those bonds, so we don't go up to the $16 million on this particular project, or it gets transferred to something else that, that we want to be bonded, but it'll be a direct action of this Board of Alderman. All right, so let's continue with, are there any other testimony in favor? All right, testimony in opposition?
Lori Oralano, 41 Berkeley Street, I'm speaking in opposition, but I have some questions, and I'm speaking in opposition largely off of the comment in favor, the comments by the prior public speaker, so with a little different slant. What portion, $16 million or so of ESER money is coming our way, an additional $16 million to bond? If I heard correctly, we're doing these HVAC upgrades, but the HVAC upgrades, which can be covered by ESER, are only part of what's needed, because we've got to do some building modifications with doors and closing off spaces, which would affect your HVAC system as well, is that true?
That's true.
Okay, and you've got to balance your HVAC system, so do the balancing, you have to have your spaces defined as open or closed, to balance the system, I get that. Now, what per percentage of the money, how much does the HVAC cost, and how much do the other renovations that sort of go hand in hand with the actual HVAC work cost? Is it a 16, is it 16 and 16, is it pretty even?
Mr. Smith? Got it? They get closer to you, Mike.
I didn't bring that information with me, I can, I can get that to you at a later date.
Okay.
But I would say that we, again, we are, just got the schematic drawings, the Energy Efficient Inc., who's our engineering company, is working on the HVAC system, they're hoping to wrap that up in the next week or so. It's two different processes, they have to go to the state for approval, and then we have this bonded approach. Between the two of them, once their process is done, then I can give you an answer of how much goes towards HVAC, how much goes towards walls, how much is going to electrical, it's, if you're familiar with construction, there are things called divisions.
Yep.
So all those things, I can give those answers probably, hopefully in a few weeks.
Okay, so, are we required to spend all of the ESER money given for 2023 in 2023, or can some of it be carried over to next year?
It has to be spent by September of 2024.
Okay, and did I read correctly that there's a little more ESER money coming in 2024, $3 million or something?
I'm seeing a no from Mr. Donovan.
No, okay, so this is the end of it, and is there any future ESER, this is all COVID-related, so is this the end of ESER money? This is like the end of it, okay. Which I'm okay with, just because I'm okay with being done with that phase of life. You know, I think that I'd like to see personally, one school done, instead of two, and because we have a lot of expenditures going on here, and we're asking, you know, citizens to cover a lot of costs, and is this, are these, is, was this bond something we anticipated in our budget spending this year? Was this built into our 2023 budget?
Mr. Griffin?
John Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax collector. This actually was not in our bond plan. This was a situation where the ESER funds materialized, and Alderman Dowd talked to the mayor and I, and we decided if, if they've been on the CIC for a while, it probably made sense to do them both with the ESER funds and do it well. So as part of my discussion after, I wanted to answer that immediate question, but I want to go through the process of bond sale planning, and bonding, and approvals by the Board of Alderman, and how they happen, tie in with the CIC, all of that stuff, so if you give me a little bit of time, I will do that, but I wanted to answer that instant question, that, as, as Treasurer for Debt always told us, the bond plan is a living document, it's not, this is what we're going to do today, damn the torpedoes, full speed ahead, it's literally moving, priority changing, et cetera, and this was a classic case. Thank you.
So the other thing is, we're doing two schools at, at the same time, same companies, and if we only did one school, we'd be spending less money now, but we'd be more than doubling and maybe tripling the cost of doing the other school later.
You can say that about everything, Alderman Dowd. And the truth of the matter is, we have limited amounts of money, we just heard that it really wasn't planned, an opportunity came up with this ESER money, terrific, but the rest of it, the $16 million, wasn't planned. And, you know, yesterday, I attended a meeting, and we, and we're saying these schools are 30 years old and really need renovating. Yesterday, I attended a meeting, and we talked about our 45-year-old fire station, and the immediate need to address that, and I agree. Some of you were very passionate that that needs to be a priority. 45 years, and it's a public safety issue. I agree, but you've got to start carving out some of this money that you're just laying down as opportunity at the door, to make taxpayers pay, and then roll in with, you know, the fire station's got to be done too. All I'm saying is, I don't envy your job, I really don't, because I think everything that gets presented to you gets presented as a legitimate need. It's true. People aren't coming up here asking your city workers just to waste money willy-nilly, and they do have to think about it, but a lot gets thrown on you, and you have to have a plan that thinks, I think you have to think a little more broadly, I'm really concerned about the fact that the RFP just went out, and we really don't have pricing. These are tough times when it comes to costing projects, given the inflation rate and what's going on. And I know, in the past, I just found a set of minutes from 2019 where you said historically, you're on the record, we don't, we never spend our contingency money, we just roll it back, back in. But I think we're starting to spend our contingency money now on projects because of this inflationary rate. Thank God we have it, we're using it, that's a sign of the times. So I'm just concerned, because today's numbers that came out in the news regarding inflation and what's happening with, you know, citizens and taxpayers buying, buying food and stuff is, is bleak. I got a call from my son, who's a 20-something-year-old kid, who has to eat a gluten-free diet, and he said, "Mom, I went to the market and just got a basket of food." Now, he makes a decent income, but not, he has a house and a mortgage. "I bought 11 items of my gluten-free food, and it was $104." He said, "Molly and I aren't going out to eat anymore, at all, we cannot afford it." That's real. So I'm just trying to think about that, and I know you say it's a good deal, it's a good deal. I agree, I love a good deal too, but I'm just asking for some balance and prudence.
The more important question would be, which school would you select, and which students would be left with less security and less good air, including the staff?
That's, that's your decision, and that's not the way...
And our decision is to do both schools and get it at 50% of the cost.
And let me, let me bring this on too, you know, you're talking about facilities, you know, the needs of facilities, and I get it, the buildings, but I also have concerns in the schools about program, and there's no money...
Wait, you're...
Money.
You're getting, you're, you're outside the bounds of this public hearing.
I'm talking about the money that's being spent here, that shouldn't be spent here because...
That's not bonding money, you're talking about programs in the schools.
Okay.
Go to the Board of Education if you want to talk about the educational part of it.
Well, that's money that needs to be spent too, whether it's bonded or not.
It's not part of this bond.
Well, and, and I think that the money you're bonding here to pay for building stuff ought to be used toward programming instead within the school as well. Thank you.
I suggest you go to the Board of Ed. Anyone else in opposition?
Laura Cahoon, Greenwood Drive, 30 Greenwood Drive. First of all, I find, it's unbelievable, I've got to come here and just tell the board not to spend money. I guess you guys haven't heard, inflation is at the highest it has been in 40 years. And this on top of the taxpayers getting a huge increase this year, just before Christmas, bah humbug, guys. States like California and New York are cutting taxes, however, our Aldermen just keep spending. Do you not realize the situation that if you put, you are putting the taxpayers in? They have a choice between paying their property taxes and/or eating or paying gas. Then, this mayor may find it funny and tell us to get a reverse mortgage, however, the Nashville taxpayers are not laughing. As of June, the city owed 8.0, was owed $8.6 million in back property taxes, that's through 2021. How many more property tax owners will not be able to pay their property taxes? Most of the Aldermen are either working or getting nice pensions, but most of the residents are not that lucky. In June of 2022, the city owed $280 million in bonds, and the city still needs another $69 million to keep up with the city, city spending, and, and can, not even, this is not even considering what recently has been passed. If you just look at R-21193 for $21 million for the Riverwalk, or R-22016 for Franklin Street, these were not listed on the bond listing as of June. It's funny that Mr. Griffin told me that we were going to get $3.2 million in September for ESER funds, $12.9 in September of 2003, and $29 million in 2024. Does the taxpayers have to lay this money out till we get the money? Because obviously, you're wrong, we don't have it, and we already laid out $6 million for Franklin Street. The saddest part of this, I think if you look at the ESER funds, it was designed to help children, okay? Enhance their reading and, and enrich their programs, support social and emotional learning, purchasing technology, creative programs to track and reduce learning loss, are just a few areas that these funds are supposed to go to. So why is the city putting it through, the money through renovations? Does the city care so little for our children that they would put renovations over educational needs? This better, this board better start thinking about cutting expenses, period. Hold off on special projects that you may want to do, and do what other residents are currently doing and putting it on the back burner. Enough already, you need to start standing up for the taxpayers, remember, they're, they're the ones that have voted for you. Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, testimony in favor again? Mr. Donovan?
Yes, Dan Donovan, Chief Operating Officer for the School District. The previous speaker mentioned... The previous speaker mentioned a few things that are inaccurate. First of all, the total amount of Esser funds we've received, three different Esser funds, is about $46 million. About 20 million of that is going towards facility improvements. The rest of that money is going towards our students and our programs and increased staff, et cetera, et cetera. So more than half of the money is going to those areas. To be honest with you, spending $46 million on programs and staff when you can't find them is kind of hard to do. So this is the plan that we've put together, administration, and we've shared most of it with the school board, we'll be sharing again in the next couple of months at a Finance and Ops Committee meeting. And as far as the money, the money is all in the grant system. We're not waiting for any money. We incur the expense, we send an invoice to the state, we get paid back. So all that money's available, it's not going to change. There's no more coming. The dates, the first 3 million was given to us in March of 20. We had until this September to spend it. The next 13 million, we were given in June, or March or June of 21. We have until September of 23 to spend, and the last grant, the 29 to 30 million, we were given that in 21, and we have until September of 24 to spend that. So those are just some facts.
Thank you. Testimony in favor? Any other testimony in favor? Once again, testimony in opposition?
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I guess I'd like to address the programming issue that, or statements that were made by Mr. Donovan, and how Esser funds can be used. So, and I'd like to address it in terms of this bond, because it sounds like a good portion of that 60 million, if that was the right number of Esser money, is going toward 40 or so, toward educational programs. So I happen to be of the belief that there should be more put into educational programs, which would reduce this bond. And the reason I say that is, at the high school, they have a block, E-block, that is supposed to be dedicated for students to go receive tutoring, you know, counseling, go to the library. It's their free block to go get help for their classes. They haven't been able to use the E-block in almost a year because they can't move the students through the hallways because of fights that break out. They don't have the staffing or the security to move the students through safely. So the tutoring, counseling, you know, library program has been canceled. And that's an educational loss of an entire block forever now, if we don't produce a solution where we can have people in the hallways so that the kids can move through that block. And that has gone on, I've heard that repeatedly. I checked on that with the school, they do have a problem with that block. I think we have to do a solution. And I think if Esser funds could be used to get that worked out, so, you know, even our teachers with their contract, that's a sort of a working block for them to be able to do tutoring and counseling, and it's not being used by them, because everyone is sort of hostage in their place, because the kids can't move through the hallway safely. I just think that's a problem we ought to be able to solve. It's a whole block of educational time. It's gone on for a long time. Thank you.
Any other testimony in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:54. And I will open the public hearing on Resolution R 22067 at 7:54, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $6,394,575 for the city sewer infrastructure program and sewer structures. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and... Mr. Hudson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Dan Hudson, City Engineer. So this resolution for this bond is to address our sewer collection system. The city has 446 miles of sewer pipe. We have 13 pump stations. We have eight locations where we have syphons, which are pipes that run under our rivers and water bodies. Those include 22 barrels or individual pipes ranging in size from six inches to 60 inches. This, this bond money provides for the rehabilitation of broken pipes and obsolete or failing pipes, catch bases and manholes. I've described before, our rehabilitation program includes both a dig rehabilitation, where you actually dig up and replace a pipe, which is very expensive and disruptive. And it also includes rehabilitation through cured-in-place pipe lining, where we actually blow a liner into the pipe, harden, cure it, and then you basically get a new pipe within the old pipe. A big part of this program is completing closed-circuit television inspection work, where we clean the pipes, video inspect them, and that's necessary in order to identify where we have issues that we need to address through one of these rehabilitation methods. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many, you mentioned Nashua has 446 miles of sewer lines. It's a great trivia question. How many miles, or can you give me the scope of this project? What does 6.4 million dollars get us? How many miles of sewer? How many catch basins? What does that look like?
Sure, I'd be happy to address that. So not as much as you would think, because this work is very expensive, but each year we inspect about 70,000 feet of pipe. So that's the portion we get a look into. And then we, we replace usually about 3,000 feet of pipe a year. That's through the dig and the replace, very expensive. And then we line, it ranges year to year, but we line anywhere from 10,000 feet to 30,000 feet of pipe. And that, of course, is all dependent upon what we find when we CCTV. We prioritize to look at the oldest pipes and the pipe materials that are most suspect. The earlier concrete unreinforced pipe has been problematic. Some of the earlier pipe with many, many joints also have been problematic. So we're prioritizing looking at those, and so we are finding plenty of, plenty of things to work on due to those, age of those pipes as we work further into the newer pipes in the system and the more modern materials. We expect that work to tail off over time, but we're certainly not to that point yet.
Alderman Sullivan?
So this is not, this is not, this is not bonded money to take care of an immediate problem. It sounds like it's more maintenance to fund upgrades and inspection and replacement. There's no emergency here.
This will fund emergency repairs if we find, if that happens, if we have a sinkhole, we can send our dig contractor out to replace that immediately, and that definitely occurs. Earlier this year, we had a sinkhole on Main Street and discovered it, a utility company discovered during some of their work, a gas company. Actually, under the concrete roadway, there was a large void, which we hadn't found, but due to a failing sewer pipe, and we were able to immediately respond and do that work to repair it. So it does do that, and you can only fix what you find. There are pipes that are suspect crack, that if we can line them before they get to the point of becoming an emergency, we don't have that emergency, and we just, we don't know that until we look in the pipes and, and find them and try to address them. Digging the pipes is about 20 times more expensive than lining the pipes, so we feel that the CCTV work and lining is money well spent.
So you had given the board a quite extensive presentation on this recurring yearly program that I assume is online in the DPW website?
I, yeah, I believe so. I could check, and I'm happy to provide a previous presentation to anybody that's interested.
Alderman Sullivan's question, this is a yearly program, and if we skip a year, now we're catching up, right?
Yeah, I view it somewhat as catch-up still. I mean, we've been at this fairly robust phase of the program for about five years. We've looked at about, you know, 11 or 12% of the sewer system. We're also doing this in conjunction with the paving program, so we're trying to look at the sewer mains on streets that we are paving, and of course, we're doing quite an extensive amount of paving as well. And we really want to do that, because nobody, nobody wants a sewer collapse on the street and just after you pave it, that's kind of the worst situation. So, so it's many-faceted, and it's done in conjunction with all the other work that we have going on.
All set, Alderman Sullivan?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Lauren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mostly answered this question already, but what are the risks of not performing the general maintenance? Would the cost of emergency maintenance be more than the general maintenance?
Excellent question, yeah, it certainly would be. I mean, if we looked at all the pipes and had no problems, and there wasn't any emergencies, then of course it wouldn't, because you would have spent that money looking, but that tends to not be the case. I mean, we do have regularly, regular and recurring emergency situations where we have pipe collapses, unfortunately. So that's always a part of the program every year. We always have some planned work, because we have pipes that are in a bad enough condition that we really can't line them, they're too out of shape, or they're, you know, half collapsed, that sort of thing. So we always have some planned work going into our dig contract, but then we always leave room in the contract for unforeseen circumstances. So that's another part of it.
And there were a lot of great pictures in that presentation of the examples that you just pointed out.
Yeah, I have lots of pictures of bad pipe. And in order to do the CCTV inspection, another part of that is we clean the pipes. They're jetted before they're TV'd, so we also get the, kind of the maintenance out at benefit of that, where we're restoring full capacity to pipes that, you know, may have grease or sediment buildup or some other issue. We, this year, we're also doing a sewer rehabilitation project. The syphons, we looked at those a couple of years ago, they hadn't been looked at in a long time. Most locations have multiple barrels, and we have barrels that were completely full of, clogged full of sediment. So it's, it's definitely favorable that we are doing this work. Obviously, we want our system to have capacity so we can deliver the flows to the treatment plant and avoid CSO events and that sort of thing.
All set, Alderman Lauren?
Yes, thank you so much for the answer.
Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, can you tell me a little bit about the, the post-operation inspection, I guess, the quality control that takes place after? Are vendors required to, I guess somebody checking to make sure vendors, for example, they dig up a brick, brickwork, they're putting the brick back instead of just sealing it, or that they're making sure that they pave the road back to the level it was at, so there's like a divot?
Yeah, great question. So for the pipe work, we, they TV, clean and TV the pipes beforehand, the ones that need lining, they take measurements to order the proper liner. They do the lining, and they do, they do a post-lining inspection afterwards. We have video of before and after to, for quality control purposes there. The structure work is done in the streets. We, we contract engineering support as well, so we have people inspecting that work that's being done by the contractors. So there is checks and balances, of course, we can't, you know, be there every second of every operation, but we've been fair, we've been lucky to have some pretty good contractors who have done good work for us, and we, we do do the checking and quality control, basically, to confirm that they're doing what we're asking them to do and what's specified.
All follow-up, Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, with regards to, you referenced linings and that kind of stuff, and one of my fellow Aldermen mentioned, referred to this as sort of an upgrade project rather than, I mean, I kind of look at more as if your sewer isn't working, that's a big problem. So making sure the city is delivering those services that keep Nashua sanitary and not fighting over, you know, access to clean water and that kind of stuff is essential. But there are some degree of upgrades, not so much cosmetic, like getting the latest greatest iPhone, but more like we have very old sewer infrastructure. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So we have sewers dating back to the 1800s. That's when some of our first sewer systems went in. We have some, you know, large diameter, or actually kind of egg or oval-shaped brick sewers. Those are the oldest sewers we have, and coincidentally, those tend to be in pretty good shape, although we keep taking a look at them every so often. But, but yeah, the, you know, we have a wide variety of pipes and ages, and some of these pipes I don't think have been looked in in 100 years, and that's really too long. I mean, we, we need to continue this program, we need to look through the oldest stuff and the most susceptible stuff, the stuff that's going to cause us the greatest problems if we should have an issue. And at some point, as I said, we will, we will get to the point that we've been through all that, cleaned it, and then we'll be in a more of a maintenance mode, but we're not there yet, unfortunately.
All set, Alderman?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other clarifying questions? Yes, Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Hudson. Just a pig pile, kind of on some of the comments that Alderman Sullivan made. I was listening to some of the numbers, we've got over 400 miles of sewer, and some of the answers you gave were more in the scope of tens of thousands of feet. So my, my rough math in my head puts that out about five or six miles, it was like 1%. So as has been pointed out to me, I haven't been in this chair for a very long time. Is this something we do every year? Do we bond a certain amount to do, about 1% of the repairs on a yearly basis? Is this something we're going to look forward to doing this year and next year and going forward? We have to kind of revolve the way we do with the paving program?
Excellent question, yeah, yeah, that is kind of the mode we're in now. As I said, we accelerated this program about five years ago, started at a, you know, four to five million dollar bonding amount. We've been trying to index that for inflation, so this year's request is 3% more than last year's. Of course, inflation's been a little bit higher than that this year. But yeah, we, for the foreseeable future, you know, at least in the next five, 10 years, I would anticipate we do the same thing. At some point, we will get through the oldest parts of the system and the most susceptible pipes, and as I said, get to the newer pipes, and then we would expect that the need for the replacement and the lining would go down. Since we are looking at some of the oldest pipes, we are lining about a third of what we, what we look in, not so much on the streets we're paving, but I mean, on the streets that we're just out looking at, through the oldest material pipes, we're lining about a third of what we look in. So, so yeah, it's, it's, it's work that we feel has value to the city and should continue for the foreseeable future here.
Thank you.
All set, Alderman Como?
Any others, questions, clarifying questions? Yes, Alderman Lopez?
Sorry, not trying to circle back again, but your last comment had me wondering. You mentioned that right now we're doing our oldest pipes, and those need replacement a little more often than the newer stuff. Does that mean that we, the more we're doing, the greater the gains could be, where more modern pipe technology yields better results, less sinkholes, and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. Around the 1950s or so, the materials started getting much better, and that's actually, I mean, actually, the 70s is when the material got better, but from the 50s to now is kind of, our system grew pretty exponentially during that period. When we're 1950s, back in the 1800s, that stuff's quite old. And as I said earlier, we are looking at it, expecting to find problems, and are finding problems. So yeah, once we get in the materials that are more modern, the reinforced concrete pipes, the PVC pipes for sure, we wouldn't expect to find nearly the problems. We honestly, unless it's on a paving street of high criticality, we're not even looking in those PVC pipes, because we, we don't have issues or haven't had really issues with those pipes and don't expect to have them. So that's not an area of focus right now.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Someone else? Thank you, if you want, hold on for a second. Okay, on R 22067, testimony in favor?
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Just a quick question. I'm presuming based on the discussion that this was a budgeted item within your Public Works budget, is that correct?
Yes, my understanding is this was included in the budget, shows up like as a revenue item, and it's paid for through sewer rates. So it's, it's, it wasn't anticipated, a budgeted item.
It wasn't anticipated, thank you very much.
Any other testimony in favor? All right, moving on, testimony in opposition? Seeing none, again, testimony in favor? Seeing none, again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none. Seeing none. We close the public hearing at 8:10. Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you.
And by the way, would the people that presented stick around for the budget meeting in case questions come up? The final public hearing is on R 22068, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million for school building safety improvements.
Mr. Smith?
Hello again. Sean Smith, plan operations director for the Nashua School District. This bond proposal is to fund the installation of security vestibules at three elementary schools. Several years ago, we received grant funding that took care of the vast majority of our schools. We actually went back to the two high schools and improved the security vestibules there, and then we took care of the majority of our schools. The three schools that we still want to do, and I don't really want to name them in public for security reasons, we could not do without grant money because of the expense of doing them. These particular schools, the architecture, the location of the main office precluded them from doing a simple fix, which grant money could pay for. So that, in short, that's the reason for this bond.
And is some potential, there's talk of federal fundings that might offset this. State funding, they haven't been too friendly with it. But the federal funding is supposedly coming down the pike under the new bill that was just passed a while ago. It may take a while, but if the funding comes in from the federal government to pay for all of this or offset it, we won't then issue the bonds. But we have to get started on this, again, for no other reason than because of the economy thing, prices are escalating. And it's very difficult for parents because all the other schools have the security vestibule that protects them, and these three schools don't. So we want for the safety of the schools to do these three schools. Any questions for Mr. Smith, clarifying questions? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, you say there's three elementary schools, $2 million to do the schools, the project itself, the materials, the labor, everything, has that all been sourced out? And do we have all those bids back? Do you know?
It has not. Actually, we, when we did the grants, I want to say it was three years ago when we did the other security vestibules, two of these schools we did get bids for. So the numbers that we arrived at to get the $2 million, they're based somewhat on fact with inflation thrown in. That does include, we did the RFP already for an architect, so that fee is included in this number. But we would still hire a construction manager or a general contractor to do the actual work. Once the architect finishes their design, then we would figure out the rest of it.
And you're confident that that will get in under the?
Yes.
My experience with Mr. Smith is when he gives us a price, it's safe. And again, if we don't spend any of the money, it goes, we don't sell the bond, and we can use it for another purpose, so just not bond it, either one. But this is a small project, but very important because the people who send students to those schools have been really after this, so. All right? Any other clarifying questions? All right, then I'll open the public hearing. On testimony in favor?
Matthew Guthrie, 104 Fon Lane. I'm not going to be that guy that's going to speak out against school safety, but I was truly hoping for some additional details, which I was really glad to see that we got them. It wasn't available at first reading. One of the things that I'm concerned about with this project, even though I'm in favor of it, is, as we just talked about earlier, we're basing this all on guesstimates, that how much this is going to cost. And what I think is, if this is $2 million, and you, there is even an inkling that you guys are going to get federal funds for it, I don't even understand why you're bonding this. I mean, you should be kicking this down to the budget committee and putting this into the surplus funds that you guys discussed about the other night. I mean, this is a perfect project for that. So, I mean, I'm in favor of doing it because it's school safety, but you guys should be thinking out of the box when it comes to this stuff. This is something that's perfect for those surplus funds. You don't need to be costing the taxpayers extra money to bond this. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have any guarantees on the federal funding, and no one can tell us whether they will or haven't or when, so.
$7 million.
All right. So any other testimony in favor? Seeing none. Testimony in opposition? Seeing none. Once again, testimony in favor? Seeing none. Testimony in opposition? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing at 8:16 PM. All right, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make the motion that the October 13, 2022, special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Fosed. Were adjourned at 8:16 PM. Five minutes, we'll start the budget meeting. Videoographers, they're ready to go. Okay, I'd like to call the Special Budget Review Committee to order. It's 8:22 PM in the Aldemantic Chamber. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman at large, Larry Wiltshire?
I'm here.
Alderman John Sullivan?
Here.
Alderwoman at large, here's Shawna Kelly?
I'm here.
Alderman Ernest Jettie?
Here.
Alderman June Karen?
I'm here.
Alderman at large, Michael B. O'Brien, Sr., is present. And our chairman, Alderman Richard A. Dowd?
Present.
You have full attendance, Mr. Chairman. Also, here is Alderman Como? Alderman Tebow? Alderman Timmons?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons? And Alderman Moran. Also in attendance? John Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Trash Collect, uh, Tax Collector. Did I say Trash? That may be a promotion, I don't know. Okay, you should see, no, we'll leave that one alone. And we do have other cities officials. You want me to list them as if they speak?
Yeah, this, even Mr. Smith?
Okay.
And I think the chief's doing?
Yes.
Chief Buxton?
Yep.
All right, we have Sean Smith from the School Department, and Deputy Chief Barrows from the Fire Department. Also, Jeff Lefleur from the BPW, and our city engineer, Dan Hudson, also in attendance.
We're all covered. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in public comment? Oh. Waiting in the back is Director Cummings.
Oh, yes. And Director Tim Cummings is also present. Thank you.
All right. No one for public comment? All right, we'll move on. Communications?
From Kevin Burgess, chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners, reason regarding fire apparatus replacement, finance meeting?
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Unfinished business?
There is none.
New business resolutions?
Before us this evening is R-22-064, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $867,367 to purchase 2023 PSAR XT pump truck with associated equipment. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to recommend final passage.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to recommend of the full board final passages of R 22064. Questions? Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know that CFO Griffin is here. He wanted to talk about the general overall bonding scheme for the city. And wouldn't, would it not be appropriate for him to make that presentation before we look at these individual bonds?
Mr. Griffin?
I withdraw my motion.
No, no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector. I would like to refer this as a plan as opposed to a scheme, but I'm only kidding.
All this from the trash collector here.
I didn't mean anything by that.
Neither did I.
But I appreciate the time because we obviously decided to bring in a multi, you know, five bonding authorizations, and there is a reason for it. It's easier for, to do it. And I just wanted to share with you folks, thank you for listening, having the public hearings. By way of background, Chairman Dowd, he requested that Ms. Linda, Cheryl Linda, my treasury management officer, and I come in on May 5th. So for those of you that attended that meeting, I'll be a little bit redundant, but at that meeting, I talked a lot about budget planning and how we operate in the Financial Services Division. So, but some highlights for tonight is that we've kind of got a cross-section of bonding. We've got the two schools that you've heard, that's going to affect the school debt service, general fund school debt service. The fire truck is going to affect the city debt service. The solid waste bonding is going to be in the solid waste debt service. And finally, the sewer infrastructure related expenses is going to be in the wastewater budgets. So I included this year's debt service budget, so fiscal '23 debt service budgets that you've all reviewed in the budget, just to show you where those items are going to be placed once we sell the bonds. And so for a little bit of history, we generally sell bonds once a year, but we're really sensitive to market conditions. So I don't see us selling any bonds related to these items until at least July or August of next year. So when we do that, there's a year that goes by before we even have an interest payment and then a debt, and then a debt service payment, a principal payment. So there'll be no impact. These decisions you make tonight have no impact on fiscal '23 debt service. That's important because as you've discussed and Chairman Dowd has mentioned, we don't, after tonight, we're not going to run out and sell the bonds for a couple of reasons. One, we couldn't do it anyway. But secondly, there's this thing called arbitrage, which is, at that May 5th meeting, Corporation Counsel Bolton spoke very eloquently about it, but essentially, you can't borrow money and save it, put it in a bank account, earn interest, while you're not spending the money for the purposes in which you borrowed. And these calculations are just mind-boggling because what you really have to do is get the spending on a per-week basis of these projects. So they're tracked in our accounting system, and then we're, we use an outsourced... We use an outsourced solution provider to transmit that to the IRS. That's an IRS rule. So given all of that, I did want to, if you could, refer to the, the packet that says, "City of Nashua Bond Public Hearings, October 13, 2022, General Fund Bond Sales Plan, May of 2022." So as we were preparing for our bond sale in July of, or August of 2022, we create what's referred to as a General Fund Obligation Bond Sale Plan. And you can see that on lines two through six, those are the resolutions that you already passed, and we're making decisions on when to sell the bonds. So as an example, the middle school, the middle school project called for $25 million, as an example, to be sold in fiscal '23. We actually sold $35 million because we're worried about what we thought was going to be a significant increase in the borrowing rate because of the, all the things going on in Washington with regard to trying to stave off inflation and increase the borrowing rate by the feds. That's an example. The other example is down below the first, below line eight, these are the plans that we have in place as of May. And as I mentioned, it's an evolving plan in that we decided to add in the plan, the $16 million that we're asking for approval tonight for the bonding authorization for the two schools. There's other things in here. There's a series of fire apparatus. Just want to speak to that briefly. When Mayor Lozo, back in 2010, came up with a fleet evaluation for most of the, all of the vehicles, actually, it was determined by my predecessor, CFO Gilbar, that we really couldn't fund fire apparatus with cash. And furthermore, with the investments we made in the trash collecting operation, of which I just became the charge of, no, ma'am. We, we decided that couldn't be, we'd be paid with cash either, though those refuse trucks are fairly expensive. And even in the landfill, you know, these trash compacters and bulldozers and all of that are very expensive. So SURF, and you'll hear more about SURF, but it was never any intent to pay for any part of the apparatus with, with cash. And if we did, we'd have to put more into SURF, which you're finding that we were a little bit short in there again. So we bonded, but the good news is, once you authorize it, the Chief and his team can secure the early payment discounts that they've come to know and get from the provider. So, so that's, that's going to be money that's going to be spent. They're going to get the discount. And then probably next year, we'll bond that apparatus. That makes sense to us. We'll have no arbitrage risk because we've paid the money already. We have the apparatus. And, and as you know, if you've talked to the Chief and his team, it's not like a production of a vehicle. It's, it takes a while. And they have to fly out there, I think it's in the Midwest somewhere, but they fly out there and make sure it's perfect to be used on the streets of Nashua. So that's the little bit about the first one, the, the fire apparatus. And you'll see some items on here that, to further discuss the non-authorized possible projects, we know them in the, in the, in the next few years, some we're going to do, some we're not. But if you look at line 23, "Other," Treasurer for Debt would historically put $3 million for things that crop up. But I added the $15 million in the years '26, '27, and '28 because undoubtedly, we need things, we need bonding plans. So this is the plan, what we sold actually in July of this year that culminated in August. That's not going to hit, that's not hitting this budget. That's going to hit fiscal '24. So if you think about it, what's hitting the fiscal '23 budget is things that were bonded two summers ago, not this past summer. Be happy to answer any questions on that. And then finally, if we look at what's called the Debt Service Plan. Hopefully, you can read this fairly, fairly well, but what I, what we've decided to do is basically say, in a point in time, which is May 2022, what do we have for debt service on the current debt? So that's column B. So we had $16.8 million. And as you can see, we extinguish the principal on the debt as we go down the page, down to the debt that we have right now, 2048, be a big payment, 2048. So we extinguish all of this, 16, 8, 12. Now, the column E is what we're going to see going forward for debt service. So you'll see that, and we had a lot of discussions about debt and what is a reasonable debt service for a city that has a $302 million budget? And we're on the low end of that. You know, if you take $17 million divided by 303 million, it's less than 10% significantly. But we're going to see growth over the next several years because of the projects that we've undertaken to top off in 2029 at about $24 million. And then depending upon what the city does going forward, that would either go up or down. But this is through fiscal '28, so there's no projects here after fiscal '28. So that's why you see it completely unwinding down to year 2050, you know, very small amounts. So there's no growth in this after fiscal '28. This is where the school and the fire apparatus is going to hit this, all right? And the reason why, going, going to the debt schedules in the other packet, you have the general fund debt, of which we have a lot, lot of small things, some large. Broad Street Parkway is probably the biggest, or Veterans Memorial Parkway at this point. So you'll see the, the items that we sold in July of this year, you're going to see that on these schedules next year. You're not going to see the stuff that you approved tonight because we haven't sold the bonds yet. So it doesn't come on here until we sell it. So each one of these is, as I mentioned, you've got city, school, school debt's pretty compact, but they're large projects. You've got solid waste, which is Superintendent LaFleur talked to, lot of equipment, lot of building of the phases in the landfill. The reason why you have the bonding and the SRF funding is the state revolving funds, very reasonable rates to borrow to get qualified debt for qualified DES approval. So those projects will go in here. And then finally, wastewater, that, that is completely funded by user fees and other charges related to wastewater. If you recall, a few years ago, we had a rate study put before you folks where you approved a 20% increase two years ago and a 15% increase last year with no increase this year. So we're working towards what that's going to need. But I will say that when I started back in 2010, the amount that we did with for sewer infrastructure was about $1,003, totally inadequate. In addition to that, we were putting $1 million, I think it would have been Alderman Clemmons' as, we put $1 million towards paving. Can you imagine that, right? So several years ago, the Board of Aldermen undertook a comprehensive, at that time, Phase 1, $37.5 million of bonding for paving. And then simultaneous to that, the folks in the chairs at that time knew they had to cover the underground. Matter of fact, I saw Kinsley Street being dug up. I was unhappy, but something must have happened there. Because there's nothing more upsetting as to put paving down, as, as Mr. Hudson, City Engineer, Mr. Hudson said, than then have to dig it up and do something with it. Never looks the same. So everything's integrated, it's a bonding situation, it's necessary, you have choices to make. But I've tried to articulate kind of the, the things that we work on in the Financial Services Division in, in cooperation with police, fire, and DPW and all the other operating divisions. You will see next, we're going to have another public hearing next week, on a large piece of equipment on the Police Department that they, that they need and command, large command vehicle that we'll talk about, but that's in SURF as well, but not paid for by cash. Few years ago, you may recall, you, and I'll reaffirm it next year, next week, you decided to bond it. You actually took action to bond that piece of equipment because it was $400,000-some-odd thousand, and now it's maybe $600,000. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Alderman Clemmons first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and through you to Mr. Griffin. Just to clarify, on the, in one of these columns, I think it's column E, if you go back to the second page here, you have, under "Other," you have 3, 3, 4, and then 15, 15, 15 million. That's included, those numbers are included in column E.
Are we on the page, General Fund Obligation Bond Sales Plan?
Yeah, so on there, you have, under there, you have "Other."
Yes.
Those numbers, when you go to the last page and you go to column E, are those numbers, those $15 million in some change or whatever, are they factored into that column E?
Yes, yes, they would be, yeah, because that's the plan through 20, fiscal '28. That's correct.
So, yeah, so just a follow-up. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that "Other" is just basically put in there because we know that there's going to be expenses and things that come up from time to time that we're going to have to bond? And that's, by putting that in the plan, we can forecast out in the future what we can do. So the future may or may not look like that. It might be less if we don't spend all of that "Other," in, in other words.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And Alderman Tibode, and Alderman Kelly, and Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question, I think I remember in your past presentation, you said, "Having some debt is good, and we want to have some debt as a city." Where do we want to really be around in having, I guess, good debt going on from year to year?
There's no perfect number, but I've heard, Mr. Chairman, that 10% is not a bad idea. And it is kind of remarkable that we have less than that, and we really don't spend much on maintenance. Alderman Jettie and I participated in the capital improvement program, and as, as you said, Mr. Chairman, not a lot gets funded. We don't fund, you know, we don't have a plan. And as I mentioned on a few occasions, it's almost too late to start now. But we've got a city that has, you know, very safe, the, the people, the fire and police have the equipment they need, the schools, you know, we've done a nice job since I've been here retrofitting them, taking advantage of technology with solar panels and so forth. So it's, it's kind of disappointing that we really don't have a robust capital budget for not bonding items and not just regular maintenance, but something in between.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Kelly?
Yeah, I have a clerk question and then two questions for CFO Griffin. Do we need to accept these communications that CFO Griffin brought to the meeting?
Do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll move that we accept them and place them on the floor.
Motion is to accept the two pieces of communication that were presented to us by CFO Griffin. No discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk, make sure those are part of the record.
Am I outside?
Yes.
So, thank you for your, for these graphs, they're really interesting. I have a couple of questions. So the debt service history that you gave us was kind of going forward. If we look backward in terms of how about where that has been, you were saying we're less than 10%. Has that been historically, where we've been as a city for the last 10 years, 15 years?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I have the benefit of being here since 2010. So when I arrived, the debt service was about 18 and 19 million. And it went down to about 15 or 16. And I remember being present with President McCarthy and Mayor Lozo. And President McCarthy was trying to figure out ways to keep it at 19. It's kind of like if you paid, paid off one car and you might need another car, don't, don't have that, that loss. But we needed that relief. We couldn't, we needed it because during that period of time, we had one and a half inflation on a spending cap, so you just, you couldn't do things like that. So, so we, we drew it down, and now we're not even back to where we were, and it's $1,007, $1,005 added every year. So it is, it is a challenge.
Thank you. And I have one following question.
Okay, I was going to say, the one big bump that happened in the last 20 years was the two high schools, $174 million.
Thank you for that, that was exactly what I was looking for. So my other question, and I, I'm sure in one of these meetings that we've been, and you may have answered this, but you were talking about how we moved to bonding fire equipment. What did we do before we bonded it?
Good question, I can answer that, Mr. Chairman. Some of the techniques used in, I'd say, pre-2010 was that the, to get skin in the game by the, that department, the fire department and the police department used to fund half of what they were going to buy in SURF. Mayor Lozo changed that, said, "Let's take that out of their, their budget." So it's, it's all, the burden is on SURF, but it's really a partnership between the police, fire, DPW, et cetera. But when my predecessor, Mr. Gilbar, did the analysis, you couldn't, you couldn't possibly put enough annual money in to fund these apparatus. I mean, the pumppers are $800, $900,000, the aerials and the ladders are $1,006, you'll see that. We bought some and we have, you know, great, great fleet of vehicles, but, and then, then when we made the commitment to, to buy the Packers, C&amp;G Packers and other Packers, those are really expensive. And you can see the difference when you look at our Packers and the commercial Packers, they kind of, they kind of stick out. That's how our Packers used to work back in 2000 or 2012. So those have to be outside, they need to be bonded. They're in SURF because we're trying to capture all of the capital equipment reserve fund items, but a lot of them are bonded. Thank you.
I'll say. I had Alderman Jettie, and Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my question, I guess, is kind of related to that. So I, I understood SURF, you know, capital equipment reserve fund, you know, was, you know, like a savings account, you know, that we, you know, we, we know that we're going to need a new car in five years. So we set aside a certain amount of money every year, put it in that savings account. So when we actually have to buy the car, we've got the money, the cash, to buy the new car. So, so, you know, the, these, these items, you know, like the, the fire department equipment that's listed here, it's all labeled SURF, but it's not coming out of SURF. There's not enough money, we don't put enough money in SURF to pay for these things. So it's really not, we're not really doing what SURF is supposed to be doing. We're not setting aside the money in advance, year by year, so we have the money when we need it. And so why, why are we calling it SURF? You know, how is this different from any other bond item if we're borrowing the money to buy the, the fire engine?
Right.
Other than it being on a schedule, why is it called SURF?
SURF, if I may, Mr. Chairman, SURF was the term used, and I, I believe there's ordinances and other things that give rise to it. There used to be a SURF committee, and Alderman McCarthy saw the clunkiness of that, so he said, "Let's put it in, let's get visibility in the budget process." So that's one of the reasons. So you have a column of cash purchases. So you have a column of cash purchases. It's in the budget book that you, that you approve, but I think it's page 306. But you've got 2.25 million of cash. Then you've got a million something of bonding. And then you got grants. So it's captured, but it's not funded with the traditional way SURF was designed to be. Now, when I first got here, we got a few, a couple of years, eleven and twelve, we put the amount that was called for to fund SURF, such that it was a level payment that was gonna grow five hundred thousand every year. We couldn't make it because we had increases in wages, pensions, and other benefits, as you've kind of seen recently. So you only have so much you can spend with a spending cap environment. So we just cut out the contributions to SURF, and now we're chasing it, unfortunately. But to take it out, to put, yeah, I mean, one could argue, let's, let's not put it in SURF. It's not, it's not approved by the committee anymore, it's approved by you folks in the budget. I'm not sure what to do with it, other than keeping, we've been keeping it there. It's kind of consistent. You have all the departments, you have the requests, and then you either have them drawn by cash, bonding, or grants. So it is helpful from that perspective.
Alden Clements, did you want to take a stab at the history of SURF or not? I thought you were trying to raise your hand.
Just a brief, but I don't want to interrupt, but I just wanted to just say it's a, briefly though, I mean, basically, it is, it is a budget in and of itself, and you kind of have to think of it like your own personal budget. So for some things, you pay cash, for some things, you have a loan. For other things, you know, your uncle maybe gives you some money, and now those would be the grants, right? So you, you have, you have those. But it is set up in, in that fashion where everything's underneath one banner, and it's SURF. But some, where the money comes from is different.
Yeah, so years ago, SURF does not work the way, as you explained, SURF does not work the way SURF should work. And it's because that, because of the spending cap over the years, we could not put enough money in SURF to do what you're thinking. You know, we got a vehicle last twelve years, so we put one twelfth plus inflation into the account, and then we have the money to buy it. Couldn't. Couldn't do it. So, SURF then took on a life of its own in that we wanted to track all the vehicles in this, that were owned by the city, so that we have an idea of how old they were, when they might need to be replaced, and who owned them. So, and that didn't happen entirely till a couple of years ago?
Well, the current method's been in place since 2010. And furthermore, I would just say that the struggle is twofold. The planned replacements have had to be pushed out. We've had the team, as I mentioned, give them credit, the police, fire, DPW, and others have critically analyzed their infrastructure, we've got the vehicles, and moved things out. Some make sense, especially police vehicles. If they don't get to the hundred thousand on pursuit vehicles, they don't ask for a vehicle. So they're conscious of that. And then others, the fire department a few years ago came in and replaced three fire, fire trucks with one very useful piece of equipment. And Chief Rhodes brought that to us. And so they're, they're looking, they are looking to make sure that they have working, working trucks and apparatus, such that they don't have to worry about something breaking down when they're trying to do something good for the city. Thank you.
Follow-up, Alden Jettie?
Yeah, I just want to comment, I understand, but it's kind of misleading, you know. People, I've heard people say, well, it's, it's coming out of SURF, so it's already paid for. You know, we've already set the money aside. That's not true. I mean, what, you know, maybe we ought to call us a capital equipment replacement schedule, you know, for the items that we don't have the money for. I mean, there are, you still have a capital equipment reserve fund that, where we do have the money to replace things. But where, you know, where we, where we don't, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with the way you're doing it. I just think it's, it was, it was misleading to me, and I know other people have made the comment to me. And so I'm not the only one that was misled by that. You know, I understand it now, but just, just my comment.
Yeah, I mean, that's, those are, when I first learned of the fund, and I had to explain to Mayor Donches when he came back what the fund is about. It's not, it's not, it's a fund that we put money in that's appropriated. But it's, it hasn't been designed to cover, as you said, it's already paid for, it hasn't been. It's similar to deferred maintenance at the school department. I mean, Mr. Smith said, I mean, he comes in as CIC, and he says, I got like twenty million dollars worth of needs, and I've got two hundred thousand coming in. You know, it just doesn't work. And then you bond, and you bond the school. Because we have good equipment, we have good buildings. We just, you know, struggling with this plan to maintain them. And it has to start when you build it. Can't be, you know, we have enough for the, you know, changing the oil and all of that stuff, but as far as other things, we struggle.
So we could have separate meetings on SURF and even bonding, but we ought to get going with the, the motions that we have to get through tonight because we're holding up city staff. Alden Sullivan?
Thank you, because my question does pertain to tonight's bonding. Going back to your first handout, Mr. Griffin, please. Column E is projected total general fund debt service. On the previous page, you have listed the authorized projects you have, and then underneath it, not authorized possible projects. I went through and I tallied up the, all the bonds that we have tonight. And according to what is in the fiscal note on the, on the resolution, it's gonna add about 2.394 million to annual payments in the fiscal year. I understand it's not gonna hit in fiscal year 23. But my question is, I don't see these bonds on that page. And are they in the projections that you have on column E?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that was the question that Alderman Clements asked. They are in there. So what, what we do is we, we indicate to our financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, the amount we're gonna buy through fiscal 28. This is the, this is what we provided them. And then they come back with the debt service requirement based on interest rates, number of years, et cetera. So that creates column E.
Okay. So even though they're not listed on the previous page, doesn't, doesn't mean that they're not in there? Because they're not?
Correct.
Okay.
All set?
Yep.
All right, let's return to the motion on the floor, which is R 22064 relative to requesting final passage of the pumper truck. Any additional questions or concerns? And by the way, it's only budget that can vote. Yes, Alden Sullivan?
I want to make sure that I clarify my question. Because even though I ask a question on how, around the pumper truck, and I had a great conversation yesterday with Chief Buxton, spent an hour with me, asking stupid questions. But he was, he was great, he was patient. So I am not debating whether or not we need this truck. We need it, I understand it. My only question is around how we pay for it. I had emailed Mr. Griffin earlier. I said, can we look at a couple of different scenarios? Scenario number one is what we have in front of us, which is we're gonna bond the money and we're gonna pay it off. Scenario number two is identical to what Alderman Clements said, which is sometimes you have money in your bank account. You say, well, I want to put some money down on a car, truck, or house, and then I want to borrow the rest. So my question is, there, there would be some savings in that we get to save some of the interest against the bond because we put some of the money down. You had mentioned in your email it was worthy of a discussion. I wanted to bring it up tonight because that money might come from these escrows. Because I don't want, that's kind of hanging over the, the meeting. It's not a mutually exclusive situation. Because there is that seven million dollars there. So I just want to throw that out there for discussion to see if maybe we put half down, pay for half of it in cash, and then we bond the rest.
Want to address that, Mr. Griffin, or?
Certainly, and that's why I know and that it's a very good question, valid question, is we, we really, I don't know where you get the money. I mean, you could get it from the escrows and appropriate it. But from the SURF account, it does, we'd have to, if it's four hundred and fifty thousand, you'd have to find it, you'd have to push another couple of vehicles out into the future, that's what would happen. With regard to the savings, we, we've enjoyed savings using this strategy, which is once they get the bonding authorization, they order and pay for the apparatus. So we're gonna get that anyway if we commit to paying early. But there was, the reason still exists why we, we bond pumper trucks, ladders, aerials, and the equipment from the solid waste.
We, we do, the city does have cash, but we don't want to reduce that. It's used to balance things, and that's why we get such a high rating. You know, if we have a bill, we pay cash. But then if it's on a bond, the bond gets sold, and we put that money back in cash because we've used cash to pay for it, right?
Yeah, so the cash would have to be appropriated. And what Alderman Sullivan is thinking about is, is there a half, is there a half a million dollars worth of escrow money you want to pay for the, for the truck?
Is...
That's what he's asking, and...
Money that's going out of escrow in, into SURF, you could reduce the amount that's going into SURF and take part of that and put it towards the truck. It sort of comes out the same.
But we would save the interest by paying cash on it. And right now, the way it stands is we have three million dollars that we have appropriated, or we're, it's pending appropriation to go back into SURF. So that's, that's kind of my line of thinking.
Alden Clements?
Thank you, I appreciate that thought. But the way I look at it is, we, this schedule here that we went over, in kind of going back to what I was originally saying, SURF is a mix of, of things, and we know, we have a plan, if you look on this, for, for even in the future, for other fire engines that we're gonna be buying. And while it's nice to save money on, you know, on interest, it, they are, they are part of a plan that we have for the future. And the problem with taking the cash out of SURF is that then you sacrifice something else. And so what you're doing is you're simply taking one of these future items, and you're moving it to something else that we would pay for cash in SURF, and you're putting it back into this column over here. Because essentially, finding cash is, is not an easy thing to do in any given year, because you don't know what's gonna happen. And so that's why a lot of the, most of the requests that you see in the escrows are one-time things, or they're things that, you know, we couldn't do in the regular budget process or whatever, with the exception, of course, of, of funding SURF. And then, and there's an anomaly this year with the fire department, and there are some, or the police, I'm sorry, the police department staff. So it's my experience that when you do that, you just end up putting the money back into the other column anyway. So, so it's my opinion that we should, we should stick with the bonding plan. And that, and that goes back to why it's so important that we have a AAA bonding rating. Because we don't have the ability to go back to the taxpayer and ask for more money from them in, in cash. So we do the bonding because it's, it's a less expensive way to get what we need to provide the services that we have. And that's why having the AAA bond rating is so important. Because really, that's the only effective way that we can do this. And that's my experience on this board.
So, talking about how we fund things is probably for a separate discussion. I think that we don't have to just stick with these, with these bonds and, and, and go with them because the... Talking about the, the, the different ways of funding things is, is a more complex question that's, you know, I mean, we're gonna have that discussion on all five of these. You know, I don't think that we'd be here all night. So I'd like to just move on to, if there are any questions, other questions specifically related to bonding the fire truck. Seeing none? All right, motion on the floor is to recommend final passage to the full board of Alderman for R 22064, the purchase of a 2023 Pierce Arrow XP XT pumper truck with associated equipment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next?
Also before us this evening is R dash 22 dash 065, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed seven million fifty thousand dollars for various improvements in equipment at the solid waste department for Hills landfill. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to recommend final passage.
Motion on the, on the floor is to recommend final passage of R 22065 relative to equipment for Four Hills landfill. Questions? Alden Tebow?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my question is more general here on the things that we're going over tonight. And it's gonna be an unpopular opinion, as most of mine are. And it's gonna support Alderman Sullivan in some ways, where the committee is where we're supposed to debate and decide on these things. We're not supposed to be rubber stamping them just because of time. There's five things on here that are very important to the city. And if we're just going, well, we're gonna just bond them anyway, why don't we just put them all together and say, let's do it? I believe in bonding these, and I probably, when they come to the board of Alderman, probably will vote for them. But if other people have opinions that we want to discuss, do we want to go back to the board of Alderman and go, John, John, Alderman Sullivan's gonna come up and go, hey, I got a different way. Well, why don't we, why aren't we talking about that in committee? That's what it's supposed to be. And so it's concerning that we want to rush this stuff through. And, and believe me, I'm on the side of the bonding mostly. So, but I think that's, committee's where we're supposed to work this stuff out. Otherwise, we're gonna get to the Alderman, board of Alderman, and we're just gonna end up, you know, re-referring things like we did the other night.
So two things, um, I think that if you get into that discussion, it probably should be at finance, not at budget. Because you're talking about a new way of purchasing things. So if somebody wants to talk about it in finance...
No.
Um, you know, and going forward, we could look at different scenarios, but...
Just my two cents.
Yeah, I know. Any, uh, any other questions on, on the motion before us on the bonds for the various landfill improvements? Alderman Kelly?
Uh, thank you. I'm not gonna make the superintendent come up here, but I just want to reiterate my point from earlier that I'm going to support this. I'd love to have a conversation, I don't know if it's a budget conversation, about how we extend the life of our landfill and what other things can we be doing? Because building on's going to work for a certain extent of time. And then, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna run out of space. So what are the other things we can be doing to make sure that fifty years from now, when my kids are still living in Nashua, they have something that is...
I would suggest, if you want to, before we vote on this on the 25th, that you'd like to see Mr. LaFleur take a tour of the landfill. It's, it's an amazing undertaking, and it's, it's, it will open your eyes as to... it's, is, it will open your eyes as to what kind of equipment it takes, what goes on all day long, what they have to do in the, in the beginning of the day, the end of the day, all day long, all of the, the gas collection units that they have to keep raising as they go, you know, just a ton of things going on at the landfill. And, uh, and we have to protect that landfill or somewhere downstream, you know, somebody's gonna be paying a lot more money to get rid of trash.
I think that's my point exactly.
The longer we put that off, I'm hoping it's never in my life.
Yeah, and I think we, I think we are both agreeing to the same thing here, that I think you're right, but I think we should be talking about what is, what other things can we be doing, um, as a city to think about the resiliency of our landfill.
Okay, any other discussion on Art twenty-two oh sixty-five? Alderman Jettie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have some questions of Mr. LaFleur. The first one is the, uh, the two hundred and fifty thousand for the GPS system. Two hundred and fifty thousand strikes me as a small, relatively speaking, a small number. Do we really have to bond that, or, you know, can't we find two hundred and fifty thousand somewhere else? I don't know.
Mr. Griffin, you got two hundred and fifty thousand in your drawer or in your desk?
No. What's happened at the landfill, as I mentioned, on the, on the, um, the heavy equipment out there is, if you pay cash, you know, that transfer from solid waste to general fund just goes up. Matter of fact, Mr. LaFleur, remember, we used to pay cash for the gas sets, the, um, soil wall and other things, and we had a bright idea about five years ago to bond it. Now the debt service equals what the cash draw was, you know what I mean? It's, you can't, the thing about bonding is you need to pay it back. It's not a get out of jail free card with regard to budgeting. So we are in a quandary because Mr. LaFleur needs the equipment. He's made the affirmative case. He could pull out the two fifty and we'll just get it from, we'll get it from the general fund. It depends on when you need it, but you could take it out and just put it in your budget next year. But it's a direct draw, it's a, it's a direct draw. It's gonna be a taxpayer bill that they're gonna pay. The bonding is kind of like a whole, whole strategy. It's like when Mr. Mansfield comes in for the radios. Mind boggling, the cost, absolutely mind boggling. But there's like two producers in the entire world. But he puts it all in a bond and he can buy the radio and the back, and the systems over the police department and the cell towers and things like that, so. I thought you were gonna ask, is two fifty not enough to buy all the GPS stuff he needs? But I, I don't know.
No, that wasn't my question.
It's the other one. It's why bond it? Yep, okay.
So I, I didn't quite understand why you, uh, your, your answer was that, that the, uh, borrowing the two fifty was cheaper than paying cash? Is that what you said?
Well, there's an interest component, but the interest is, what is my cost, like as a taxpayer, what is my, what's my cost of borrowing? It's a hell of a lot more than three point five, right? I mean, I'm, I'm, that's kind of the, I mean, we haven't got into that, but we're financing things with the strength and the, and the credit of the city.
I see what you're saying.
So it's like, so you have to decide, do you want to pay, do we want to ask the taxpayers to pay two hundred and fifty thousand more next year than they otherwise would? So when we come in with the seven oh five million dollar program, it's, it's a hundred and forty, whatever the number is, like, more than a hundred and forty-seven a year, but it's, it's paid for over the life of the people that enjoy the benefit of having a landfill. That's kind of like the fire truck, that's gonna last fifteen years, so they're gonna enjoy the fact that that's gonna be around for that length of time.
I, I understa, I understand what you're saying. I, I guess I was thinking, like Alderman Sullivan, that, you know, we've got the seven million of surplus.
Right.
That's, that, you know, two fifty from that seemed like an easy...
If I, if I could add one thing, Jeff LaFleur Superintendent, solid waste. Um, we, we used to, the one point eight million that I have in this bond for the soil wall, I used to budget, in my budget, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand a year. And we came up with the, the bonding schedule to lower the interest rates for us on that because I'd be, I'm not a true enterprise fund for the city. Half of myself is funded through the general fund and half of it's through my, uh, revenues. So I'm taking out of the general fund just to fund the landfill. So if I was budgeting three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand a year for the soil wall, that's a direct cost to the, to the general fund.
So could I follow up? The other question I had was about the gas expansion, phase three system. Would that, um, could you just take a minute and explain? You know, I, I've had people complain, you know, I'm in that, that's my ward. And I've had people complain about, um, you know, of, of an odor, especially in the wintertime. And I know that methane is odorless. And I know that we've, we've got a piping system that extracts methane and we burn it off and turn it into electricity. But where, where, where does, where does that odor that people complain about come from? Will this, um, will, will this help resolve that?
This, this isn't the gas expansion, this is the expansion to the landfill to gain airspace. This right here is just to make more airspace for the city of Nashua, it's not for gas expansions. I do gas expansions yearly, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars yearly to, to extrapolate the gas out of the, out of the landfill.
Okay, it's labeled landfill gas expansion, phase three. Zigzag design and construction.
Yeah, it's, it's mislabeled. This is the design and construction of the phase three landfill.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with the gas?
No, I, I am doing gas expansions every year, I can talk to you about that a little bit. We, we do put in gas expansions when we, when we put in enough trash and at enough height, we put in gas expansions. We're not quite there yet. Our next level will probably be starting to look at gas expansions. And to your point for the odors during, sorry if this is going off topic, talking to your gas, um, your odors during the winter, it's because of barometric pressure. Everything's held into a certain area when it's cold out, and when it's nice and sunny and hot, everything just evaporates and goes off into the atmosphere. We do collect as much gas as possible, there is, it's a living, breathing organism, a landfill, it moves, it shapes. I mean, we, we find, um, emissions in one area, we have to take care of it, we cover it, we do it better, it'll find another way to get out, so we have to continuously move around. Obviously, there are odors once in a while, um, knock on wood, we haven't had a lot in the past few years. We're doing a lot better on that because we keep doing our gas expansions every year.
You know, when we did the tour last week, I got as close to the trash as you ever want to get, and didn't smell anything. And again, anybody who wants to take a tour, Jeff would be more than happy to give you a tour. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Jeff. If none, and, uh, the motion before us is for Art twenty-two oh sixty-five for various improvements in equipment for solid waste and Four Hills landfill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Also before us this evening is Art dash twenty-two dash zero six-six, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed sixteen million for building renovations at the Birch Hill and Main Dunstable Elementary School. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend final passage.
So the motion is to authorize, uh, to recommend to the full board final passage of Art twenty-two oh sixty-six. Are there any questions? Tebow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to try to clarify something I thought I heard in public comment when they said these schools are thirty years old. Did, did you guys say they were nineteen seventy-two or, or am I thinking something different on that?
Sean Smith, Plan Operations Director, they're, uh, built in nineteen seventy-two or occupied nineteen seventy-two, they were last renovated in nineteen ninety-three.
Okay.
So it's been thirty years.
Maybe that's the, the distinction they were making, because I, I thought, I thought they were older. That's all, that's all, I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. I'm looking at the capital improvement plan dated seven April twenty-twenty-two, and, uh, what page is that? Thirty-one. Down at the bottom, it's got, uh, school department budgeted, and I see Birch Hill Elementary and I see Main Dunstable Elementary renovation. I'm assuming this is the same project?
Yes.
It's slated for fiscal year, the bulk of it, is slated for the fis, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. And the total cost back in April, four, four months, four months ago, five, six months ago, was twenty-two million eight hundred forty-three thousand three fifty-one. And now, six months later, we're talking about a ten million dollar increase. Can someone please explain the delta there?
Okay, well, you, you mentioned a couple of things there. First of all, uh, in April, the board of it had not approved use of ESSER funds for the project. So we didn't have fifteen or sixteen million dollars to put toward the project. So that's why it was twenty-twenty-five. Once they decided to move those funds into the construction field, then we can move it up. So that's why it's before you now. Between that time and present is when I had, uh, the construction manager take a look at the original estimate they did back in two thousand and thirteen, and they updated it. The number you had before you in April was my poor attempt at just taking inflation year after year after year. Typically, I inflated it five percent. As we've seen in construction projects across the board the last couple of years, that number's way off. So it's a, the number we have now is updated with the construction manager.
So nothing...
That one was not.
So nothing in the scope of the project has changed, it is simply inflation?
I'd say that's pretty much correct, yes.
We've had items go up, steel doubled in price, other items have gone up forty percent. I mean, the cost increase on, on items is, is amazing. In fact, there was an article in the Union Leader today just specifically about that.
If you, if I could, if you look back in the two thousand and thirteen study that was done, uh, the cost back then, don't quote me exactly, but I want to say it was five point eight million dollars per school. So back then, it was eleven million dollars. So you can see what construction costs have gone to.
All right, I think I have Alderman Kelly?
Uh, thank you, and, and thank you for being so prudent in putting this plan together. I think it makes a lot of sense, um, to do two schools at once and use the ESSER funds. My question, you may not have the answer for, but maybe you can get it for me. As we're doing improvements like HVAC, I assume we see reductions in utilities and those types of things that will help, um, reduce the costs of these schools. Is, is that what we've seen, where we've done that in the past?
So I've been monitoring it, I've been here twenty-five years, I've been monitoring, for example, electrical costs. You would intuitively think that over a twenty-five year period, electrical costs have, have gone up significantly. The school district has stayed pretty flat. And I, I think that a lot of that's because of our energy saving measures we've implemented. Uh, not, it's not just about turning off the lights when you leave, it's, it's, it's a lot of things we've done as far as the mechanical system we've installed, uh, Energy Star equipment that we've implemented. It's, it's a little surprising because we, as we've added, modernized some of the schools, we've added not air conditioning necessarily, but decent mitigation, which is a step below air conditioning, and that actually costs more money to run. But overall, we've, we've kind of held the line even on utility costs.
Just a couple of things. One, part of this project is going to be adding additional insulation, we're putting in a new roof, uh, new windows, which will have a savings on energy. And, and we will be addressing with the company involved, uh, of putting solar on the roof. But there's no cost to this bu, budget, it's, that's the same thing we've had before, it's no cost to the city. But it would be adding electricity, which will be a big savings to the city's cost of electricity for the school.
If I could just follow that one, we, we've installed, uh, solar panels on two schools so far, Fairgrounds Middle School, Dr. Crisp. And I did an analysis, I haven't updated it, I think I last updated it in June, but it definitely showed we're saving money.
Follow up, Alderman Kelly?
Uh, thank you, I'm, I'm so grateful to hear that we're, we're working on that. I'm assuming whenever possible, we are choosing the most efficient window or HVAC or any of those. Is that the case?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Clemmons, Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. So a couple of things. One, I just want to comment that the number, uh, that Alderman Sullivan had mentioned, the twenty, I think he said twenty-two and a half million or twenty-three million. It, it's kind of amazing because, and thank goodness that we have those ESSER funds, because we're still saving money, right? Because the bond, instead of having to spend twenty-two million dollars on two schools, we only have to spend sixteen million on two schools. And that's the reason to do it now, in my opinion. That's the reason to leverage these funds, because even though the cost of constructions, excuse me, has gone up, we have these federal funds and we can still do this project for even more than was originally forecasted. So I think that in and of itself is a great thing. The second thing, and it's a cautionary tale, and, and it's one that I'm glad Nashua doesn't do. My wife's school, um, she, she works in Wyndham, and they renovated the middle school not that long ago. And they decided that in order to save money on the project, they weren't going to redo the roof. And they weren't going to, because the state allowed them to get away with it, they weren't gonna add sprinkler systems. And they did lesser, they did, you know, they didn't replace the ceiling tiles and, and, and things like that. And so they spent all of this money, millions of dollars, on this renovation for a school. And now, this year, she, she comes home, she tells me, there's water in the roof from when it rains, there's mold growing up there. You know, the heating system doesn't work because they didn't, they decided that they weren't gonna complete the duct work, do things like that. We don't do that in Nashua. When we do a project here in Nashua, we make it last. Walk into the high schools and you can see how well those are built. They were built in, in the early two thousands, and you walk in there and they're really nice buildings still. And that's because we have people like Mr. Smith who know what they're doing, and they know the value that doing the project right the first time is. And in addition to that, leveraging the right time to do it, and that's when, what this is, in my opinion, with the, those funds from the federal government, we're really in an opportunity here to be able to do a lot for less than what we originally thought it was gonna be. So, uh, I, I, this is when it gets to the full board, something I'm definitely gonna support.
Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I heard it mentioned that, um, um, you know, the boilers in these schools and the, you know, the duct work to, to the HVAC systems, is, is there an opportunity here to, uh, get away from fossil fuels and, and, um, and, and get away from what I think is a forced hot water system into a forced hot air system? And, um, you know, heat, use heat pumps, for example, instead of, uh, you know, boilers powered by oil or natural gas?
Oh, we, we balance new technologies against proven technologies. You know, for example, whenever we, we design a, a heating plant for a school, we always put in an old reliable cast iron sectional boiler. Tried and true, those things will last you thirty or forty years. But we also put a condens, what they call a condensing boiler, that's a high efficiency boiler. Condensing boilers heat your school in what we call the saddle season, so this, the spring and the fall. So the spring and the fall, that takes care of it. But when it gets down to 20 degrees, that's when you want the beast, so to speak, heating your school. We have looked at alternative technologies. We've looked at geothermal. We looked at that back when we were looking at Fairgrounds, Ledge, and Charlotte Avenue, looked at extensively at the time, and we decided at that point it wasn't for Nashua. We've mentioned solar. I mean, that's one place where we're going to get off the grid. We've, from the analysis I've done so far, we produce twice as much solar as we actually consume. So the rest of it goes off into the grid. I'd like to keep all that somehow, but the battery technology isn't there yet for us to actually keep it. So I would not suggest going away from natural gas at this point. What you're, I think what you're really probably referring to is geothermal. We've looked at that, it's not going to work. There's not enough wind in Nashua, you know, for wind technology. So, I mean, those are the main two.
Also, the Hy-Vac portion of this is being done by EEI, which we are overseeing them with a joint special, but technically they're working for the state, right?
Well, they work for the, they have a contract with the Board of Education.
Oh, okay.
But they're paid with the state funds, ESSER funds.
So they're doing the Hy-Vac, they're doing the Hy-Vac design. And they're pretty far along.
Good, their specialty is energy efficiency. Their name is Energy Efficient, Inc. The reason the Board of Ed hired them was to identify energy-saving opportunities. So they, our most recent project, which you all approved at some point, as we went through a lease process, was a cost of $7 million, but it pays for itself. And enabled us to update a lot of the plant, and we're saving more money than we're spending. So that's what this company does.
Any other further questions, Alderman?
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Break your microphone. Alderman, come on.
Yes, thank you. So I support this program and I support the timing of it. I think it's a good idea to leverage the ESSER funds, as has been discussed at length tonight. My question is, am I correct in understanding that once this is done, we've pretty much exhausted the ESSER funds? And my second part to that question would be, how many more schools don't have the Hy-Vac system that we would want to look into doing in the future? Because it sounds like, you know, it was discussed not only for, you know, potential future pandemics, but even just flu season, things like that. The system is a good thing to have in all of the schools. How many schools left are there to be done? And with the exhaustion of the ESSER funds, is that going to be left to us to fund as a city on its own? Okay, I'll hold on to first questions. That's really a Mr. Donovan answer your question. So we, actually, if you look in the capital improvement plan, I probably have the rest of those schools listed. Again, it's like a 30-year cycle. So the next few schools coming up are Mount Pleasant, Dr. Crisp, Bicentennial, New Surles, not particularly in that order. But those are the next four schools that probably need some attention. If you remember, a number of years ago, the state was providing state aid for construction. One of the things they did not provide state aid for was if you were installing unit ventilators. All those schools had unit ventilators. So we've gotten away from that completely. We're installing air handling units, ducted systems, fresh air going in all the classrooms. We're installing what's called a displacement mini-air system, which ductwork comes down in the corners of the classrooms, introduced low, takes out all the body smells and, you know, the heat, and takes it out high. It's a very well-proven technology. So it's really down to four elementary schools that we just haven't spoken for. Do you want to talk about the ESSER funding?
Sure, Dan Donovan, School Department. The, when we do these two projects, that will allocate the funds. There may be some funds that are allocated that may be spent differently. So for example, some of the funds we have allocated for positions. Some of those positions we aren't able to find. So if we're unable to find, then those monies will then free up within the allocation. It won't be anywhere near enough to do a project like this, but there might be a little bit left to do some construction work. Probably have a much better answer in about six months on that.
Thank you.
One additional thing, in the escrow funds, the 600K the School Department has to put in, those inline filters that take out 99.9% of all pathogens. And they've been fully tested and vetted, because my first question was, well, let's try it. But it's already been tested and proven that it works. And they're going to go in the schools that we have the distributed air, because it's inline air. And places it's been used significantly improves teacher attendance, student attendance, lack of illness. So. Any other questions? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommend of the full board final passage of R. 22066, $16 million for building renovations of Birch Hill and Main Dunstable. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Also, before us this evening is R. 22-067, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $6,394,575 for the city sewer infrastructure program and sewer structures. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to recommend final passage.
Motion on the floor is to recommend of the full board final passage of R. 22067, authorizing bonds for the infrastructure and sewer program. Any questions? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, in the fiscal '23 budget, total revenues for wastewater coming in at $27 million. And I think I heard that the cost of this, to pay for the bond, excuse me, is basically going to be paid from that. It's not going to, it's not going to fall towards the taxpayers or anything like that, correct? That's my-
Mr. Chairman, if I may, yes, the the revenues from the bond will pay for the cost.
Yeah.
And the cost is part of the rate structure of the wastewater customers paying. So there wouldn't any be, there wouldn't be a bill to the taxpayer.
Okay.
All set?
Just a general comment, because it's interesting when you look at kind of how things have changed and, you know, back to the point of scrutinizing things. And you look at the rate that we sold some of these bonds at, the good old days, the heady days of 2018 at a 2.84%, then down to 2.01%. And then last year at 1.79% interest rate. If I remember the resolution, I don't have it in front of me, but we're looking at an interest rate of over 4.5% on this, aren't we? At all these bonds, right?
Now, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we got, we sold all of the tax-exempt bonds at 3.55% this past summer. We really worked hard with the team to get it in. A lot of them that you're looking at here is 4.5%. Hasn't gotten there yet for AAA-rated bonds, but it's heading in that direction.
Yeah, it's just, just a comment, just a general.
But I mean, onto that comment. Treasurer for Debt refunded most of the debt back in the '07, '08, '09. And then, that's why it's kind of, everything starts in 2013.
Some of those, some of those bonds in the past had higher interest rates and Treasurer for Debt refinanced them at these lower rates when the rates were, saved a ton of money for the city.
Smart.
Right.
Yep. Any other questions? So this is for the sewer, sewer infrastructure and sewer program. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Also, before us this evening is R. 22-068, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million for school building safety improvements. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to recommend final passage.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to recommend the final passage of R. 22068, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million for school building safety improvements. Any questions? So this will finalize our security for the last three schools. And based the amount of work, pretty good price. There are no questions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. I don't think we're ready to do the table in committee, are we? Alderman Clemens?
No.
General discussion?
New business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, new business. There's none.
There's none.
Okay. Now we go to general discussion. No, no one? Public comment? Seeing none. Remarks by Alderman? Well, just start over here. Alderman Timmons?
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I usually don't speak during Alderman comment period unless it's true reported. But this time, I must speak out about the harassment and bullying techniques by some non-elected folks. These folks act as though it's their appointed duty to sue, harass, demand, abuse RTKs, and bully our city employees and elected officials. I had enough. And the public should know about the action of these five or so folks. It's not hard to figure out who they are. A very small group who have continuously bullied our employees and elected officials. Further, I am deeply outraged when these folks go after our children. When one focuses on elected official children or others do it, the real fight began. Our children are definitely off limits. I heard enough lies and misinformation in the past 10 months than I had heard in my 22-year-plus years in the military. Their lies and misinformation are dangerous and should be called out. Elected officials are not your punching bags. You may feel that you are speaking for all citizens of Nashua. You are not. And truth, you're only speaking for a very, very small number of individuals who agree with you. When we see certain individuals show up for public comments, we already know it's going to be a negative attack. That is no surprise. I don't understand what, I don't understand what's behind this group's action when Nashua had made the top four best-run city in America. Furthermore, money don't buy respect. Houses don't buy respect either. What have these individuals done for the citizens of this city? Why don't I see them at charitable events? Are you seeking power to be in the spotlight for a city that continues to do well? Why should the city take $300,000 for legal expenses rather than give this money to areas in the city that really need it, like our police and fire department? Winter is upon us, and we need DPW to be prepared for the winter months. That money can be used to care for our roles, not on defendant individual to boost their pride. No one is jealous of people who are looking for a payday. I just feel sad that these individuals live such shadow lives. Let our elected officials do their job. Find some other way to fill your time unless you are looking for a huge payoff at the end. I can't figure out why someone has so much time spending on non-stop RTKs. It's ridiculous, costly, time-consuming, and unproductive. I wonder if these individuals have won their election, would the city be better off? I think not. We probably would have less RTKs. Sabotaging the city by bombarding misinformation by the city is not working. One must wonder why they still live in Nashua. Don't ask for this RTK for my note because it's on record. You heard me. These notes are being destroyed. I'm done.
Alderman Tiwo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's never easy going after Alderman Timmons. It's not the first time I've had to speak after her. So for me, and I think for all of us here, and again, I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but I think when we're dealing with situations with money, I don't think any of us take this lightly. I don't think we're trying to take money out of the citizen's hands. I really don't. You know, a city grows, a city gets old, buildings get old, engines get old, police cars get old, and would they have to be replaced and fixed? Landfill's a problem. You know, public comment earlier said, you know, you know, something about all our pensions. I don't know where my pension's coming from. It's not the city. We're not, none of us here are elitists, in my opinion. Whether I agree with you or not, we're not. You know, I don't get a pension from ever source. I've only been working there since February. If they got one, please, please put me on it. You know, I was laid off for a year prior to that. I got a small house, my wife doesn't work, my house is falling apart. I have to wait. I can't make the repairs right now. I got a $7,000 tax bill coming. I'm, and I think a lot of us in there are in that same boat. So when we make these decisions, it's, you know, Alderman O'Brien said it last night. We have to pay the same tax bill. I don't get, I don't get anything from the city other than a stipend, a small stipend. And it doesn't cover the taxes. And, you know, I don't get anything by approving a fire truck other than a better fire truck for the city. They don't let me take it out on Friday nights for date night. I don't get anything like that. We don't get benefits other than making the city better. And there's arguments over which way to make it better, and I think that's okay. We can debate the issues. That's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to vet everything out so we can get it better, so we can make a better city. And again, we're not always going to agree, and that's fine. But I think we need to at least have those discussions. And, you know, unfortunately, the way of the structure is we can't, you know, eight of us can't go somewhere and talk about something, right? It's going to be talked about here only. So sometimes we have to talk a long time, and sometimes we have to bring in people to discuss things. But at the end, we're not trying to do the city wrong. We're trying to make it better, easier to live in, more cost-effective. I think there's some good things going on in the city. The energy stuff that Alderman Kelly was talking about, certainly, you know, a good way to go. And by the way, I do not get my electricity for free, or any discount on that. I pay the same thing as everyone else, doesn't matter. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Alderman Karen? Alderman Will Sharon? Alderman Gomo?
Sorry. So I actually just wanted to thank my colleague from Ward Eight for speaking up earlier. I'd noticed a trend, not necessarily a trend maybe, but it's happened more than once where it's been suggested that, you know, we wrap it up. And I don't ever intend to do that, no offense to anybody, but when I sit in this seat, I intend to ask as many questions as it takes to be satisfied before I cast any vote. So, you know, we've been told at full board meetings, the place to ask these questions is in committee. So that's, I feel like, what we were doing tonight. You yourself, Mr. Chair, said earlier tonight in the public hearing that if we had more questions, we were to save them for the committee meeting that was going to follow the public hearing. So some of us did that. I just hope that, you know, we're given the opportunity to do that. Along the same lines, we've had joint DPW and infrastructure meetings where we've been told that we have to stop asking questions because another meeting is coming in after us. And I disagree with that as well. Everyone here deserves the right to ask as many questions as they want to be completely satisfied before they cast a vote. And so I completely agree with the sentiments from my colleague from earlier, and I appreciate that he spoke up and said that when he did. So, thank you.
Alderman Clemens?
Thank you. I, a couple of things. I totally agree with what the Aldermen from Ward Six and Eight have said. I think that, you know, when I was speaking in response to Alderman Sullivan's question and explaining how we came to wanting to do bonds as opposed to cash, that's a history, that's a knowledge that if you're a new Alderman, you don't have. I'm lucky to have it because I've served on and off here since 2008. So I've seen different mayors, I've seen different presidents- So I've seen different mayors, I've seen different presidents of this board, I've seen many, many budgets. So I know how these things came about. And I appreciate the questions being asked, because I think they're important questions. I agree with the fact that what we are doing with the bonding is the best foot forward. And I think I, I would like to, you know, hopefully have a good discussion on that when it comes up. People are certainly allowed to disagree, and, and, you know, there's healthy debate on that. But ultimately, you know, it, it is a, a strategy, it is a decision, and it is a budgetary question. It's a strategy of how we, we do our budgets and how we proceed forward with the, the funding of different things in the city. So I think it was a valid question, and I think my response was valid. And hopefully, when things like that come up, we, we are allowed a little bit of latitude to, to go in there. The only other thing I, I wanted to just say this evening was bravo to Alderman Timmons. Thank you.
Alderman Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with Alderman Clemens, my colleagues from Ward Six, Eight, and Nine about, we can take things slow. I'm obviously new, and I, I find some of these thought-provoking questions that Alderman Sullivan and others have produced, thought-provoking, interesting. Why do we get to where we are? And a lot of it's based on history. And I'd rather hear the history out loud from experienced folks, rather than, let's, let's move on. Because that's frustrating. Because then I want to know for the next time, so when, maybe I'm on this board without such experienced folks, I can pass that down on to the next new Alderman. So yeah, I just wanted to make that statement. I do want to apologize for yesterday. I was the chairman of the PEDC, and instead of acting as chairman, I acted more as a dad. Which I didn't really have to experience much until yesterday. Alderman Timmons mentioned that, you know, attacking children, yesterday my children were attacked by a member of the public. And there have been two emails regarding them as well. And it was the first time I really been angry since probably I was a teenager. And I realized that, you know, as an Alderman, I should not have behaved in that way with a member of the public who was attacking my children live in front of me. However, I will say it's very concerning that, you know, people come in here and dish it out all the time, but someone was offended that I made some comments about millionaires. You know, attack me. I'm the politician. I'm the one that's getting paid to do this, volunteering my time really to do this. I have no qualms about people coming up here and attacking me. But you took my kids into it. And as a child protective worker, when someone does oppositional research on a child, that sends off predatory vibes like crazy. The person also mentioned that she was a donor to my kid's school, not just once here in public, but followed up in an email to tell me that. Is that a veiled threat? Is she going to have some influence over my children's school? Is she going to want a special tour while my kids are in class? Is she going to give them a what-for because of what their dad does? That's the predatory behavior that I'm concerned about. And it's very deviant to go down that road. And I thank Alderman Timmons for making such poignant statements. And the main issue was, apparently, first, I'm not a millionaire. You know, I think some people may get confused, because I own a business that does well. You know, there's a difference between gross and net, all right? I live in a very reasonable-priced house. I donate a lot of my money to charity, and I pay my employees very well. There's a lot of cost structure in my business that if I wanted to be cheap, maybe I would be a millionaire, but I'm, I'm very generous to my employees. The issue was that, as a lot of you guys know, my dad died last year. So my kids had just come off the first Christmas without their, their grandfather, and were about to enter the first Easter without their grandfather. And my kids knew we were going to a charity auction at their school. And they said, can you bid for us to be principal today? Not only did they tell me that, they told my mom that. And my mom, my mom gave me $5,000 from my dad's life insurance policy to bid for them to win. And we won. That was not me flaunting money. That was trying to give my kids the last Easter present from their grandfather. And it was frustrating when someone continuously comes in here with misinformation and proposes it in ways as if she's always right, without asking a simple question, where'd you get the money from? Not once. No emails about that, just a straight attack. As further concerning, that a member of my kid's school gave that information out to this person. That's messed up. I'm a very faithful Catholic. My church is actually in Lowell. I've never left my church in Lowell. My kids love St. Christopher's School. And it's frustrating, because I would never be treated like that in my home church. And to find out this woman's a practitioner of the, of the church and can, can target children that go to the same school that's run by that church is disgusting. And adding on to it, there was something about how I pay for the school. Yes, I do pay for the school. I absolutely would qualify for one of those school vouchers, but I don't do it, because I don't believe in taking public funds away from public schools. It is a choice that my wife and I have made to raise our kids in a Catholic school, based on our faith. And there was some email about some alternative lifestyle that I live. I live an American lifestyle. I'm married with kids, I own my own business, I get up every day and work my butt off. I don't know what's alternative about that. So, but I thank everyone who reached out to me afterwards. You know, I can't wait for the next auction. You know, I probably won't have a loan from my mom at that one. And, you know, maybe, you know, the point was to make me seem as I'm also some kind of millionaire elitist, but I will end on a funny note. There is a picture out there of me in the VIP line of a buffet. And I'll tell you, getting to cut the line of a buffet made me feel a little bit good about myself, but doesn't mean I'm an elitist. I'm still in the buffet line.
Alderman Sullivan? Okay. Just a couple things. One, I had asked all of the people that presented during the public hearing from the city to stay. I had had a discussion with Alderman Jenny about not being able to ask questions beyond clarifying questions, so they all stayed. So, and I always get a little concerned, at least when I'm chairing, that we're keeping our city employees out till 10 o'clock at night, when they have to be there the next morning, 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning. As chair of any meeting, and it's always been my philosophy, I try to keep things on track. If things start to go astray outside of the agenda, then I try to bring us back on track. There are some things that came up tonight that are very complex. I've been asking for a discussion on SERF for a long time. SERF doesn't work the way, as Alderman Jenny pointed out, that SERF shouldn't work. But it got taken out of that context a long time ago, and, and, and there were a lot of reasons that it's not what it should be. And every time I've had discussions with finance about getting it back, it's just too expensive. We just can't get there. Because we don't have enough money in SERF, ever. If you looked at the replacements, and when they happened, not enough money in there. And bonding helps that to some degree. And then, other ways of financing things, that's a more complex question. And, at least in my thinking, I think it belongs somewhere in finance, because budget we're doing, dealing with, with spending, things that have been appropriated or we're appropriating it. And finance is, is spending monies appropriated by budget. So, there's that distinction. I wasn't trying to stop anybody's questions or move the meeting along faster. Actually, to one of the members who asked questions, I told her that I can ask if anybody wants to answer the question, but I can't force anybody to answer the question. So if she asks a question and nobody volunteers to answer it, didn't mean to be gender-specific to anybody that asks a question in a public hearing and no one wants to answer it. You know? So, anyway, Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, just a quick comment, if I may. I agree with the chairman. I would like to thank the division directors for coming in tonight. I mean, they do a full day, that's what, I make sure the public understands that. They work a full shift and then get to come in here. I mean, we do it, but, you know, we're getting that stipend, so it's well worth it. And then, you know, I just want to prove that, you know, I'm a bigger man, and I would like to apologize to CFO Griffin. I know the difference between a trash collector and a tax collector, you know? So I'm sure you understand my misspoken. How about them Bruins, though?
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion?
I do have a motion, that is to a chair.
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Return to 10-01.